The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
All right, I'd like to call the board meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I'd like to ask Mike to read the mission statement.
We ensure that all students are college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse community.
Thank you, Mike. Next is our open forum. This is a time for members of the community to speak before the board. I don't have any forms filled out, but is there anyone who would like to speak before the board tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our recognition. I'm going to ask, we have our state runners-up Preble soccer team, and we're very excited to have you here tonight, and Chris is going to read the recognition award.
Thank you. Why don't you, Coach Becker, come up with your team?
Everyone?
Is this administration here from... Oh, there you are, I'm sorry. I thought you were one of the kids.
If you guys come up here with your team, you'll be on TV.
You can get on camera this way.
Have them go back here. Have them come back here.
You're ready for your close-ups. Chris, I'm going to give you the mic.
First of all, President Warren, thank you for giving me the honor of reading this. I'm proud to say I brought Coach Becker on. We were talking about it a little while ago. We thought about 10 years ago. Where does time go by?
So he's taking full credit for you.
Yeah.
I would never go that far. Never go that far. But one likes to go and how well others do, and I think we're all glowing right now. In essence, the recognition states, this is from the Green Bay school board, "In recognition of the Preble High School boys' soccer for achieving second place in the WIIAA State Soccer Tournament, and assigned by Superintendent Langenfeld, President Warren, dated November 18th, 2013, and congratulations to all of you."
On behalf of the Preble soccer team, we want to thank the school board for this recognition. These guys have worked hard all year and have gone through a lot of adversity, and I'm just so proud of these, how hard they've worked, and we're so close, too. We're never losing in any of the games at state. Just didn't turn out our way in the shootout, so.
Shootouts are just horrible ways.
But these guys did a great job, and thank you for having us. Appreciate it.
What's your, from each of the boys, and what grade, degree, and what position you play?
Hi, my name is Luis Franco. I'm a senior, and I play forward.
He also scored a goal in a championship game.
Let me, those of you that are seniors, if you could share with us what you're doing next year. I appreciate it.
Okay. I'm choosing between Stevens Point or Madison, and I plan to study international business. And I'm also in a city student council.
I'm John Swanson. I'm a senior, and I played midfield, and next year I hope to attend either Eau Claire or Whitewater, either something, majoring in business or history.
I'm Drew Kinnable. I'm a senior. I played forward, and next year I plan to go to the Navy.
I'm Alex Schumacher. I'm a senior, and next year I plan on going to St. Norbert's and studying business.
I'm Evan Garcia, and I'm uncommitted yet. I'm thinking of either NIU or North Dakota State, one for soccer or one for wrestling, so yeah, I'm a senior and I play forward.
Max Starks. I'm a freshman, so I'll be at Preble next year.
My name is Mohammed Mohammed, so I'm a senior. I play in midfield, so next year I'm going college, but oh yeah.
I'm Lance Chanowski, and I'm a freshman, too.
I'm Jason Tauschik. I'm a senior. I'm the goalkeeper, and I am planning on going to NWTC for law enforcement.
I'm Tyler Fager. I'm a senior. I play defense, and I plan on going to UW-Platfield or Oshkosh for criminal justice.
We received an email, both Brenda Warren, board president, and myself, from Tom Brennan, who is not here, and I told him we'd give him a big shout-out and congratulate him as well. I don't, I seen Natasha Rall, the principal.
On behalf of the Preble administration, I'd like to just thank the school board for recognizing our soccer team, our students, student athletes. We're extremely proud of them, to say the least. As a district, we should be very proud as to how these young gentlemen represented our schools and our district on the field and just in person. They make us very proud to be wearing Preble attire, and students of Green Bay Public Schools, thank the coach for all the work he's done with our students, and want to just congratulate them again publicly for their sportsmanship and for the hard effort that they put forth. They didn't really lose. It's all in the mind. As far as we're concerned, our boys won. So congratulations. Also, I want to thank Mr. Retzke for his support of our soccer team and seeing the boys through. As you can tell, many of them are seniors. They may be leaving us, but we're starting fresh, bringing up from freshmen, just building strength from below, so we're very proud of our boys.
I had the opportunity to go over and wish them well on their day out. Preble does an extraordinary job of celebrating their students and student athletes, and we marched through the entire school, and everyone came out of their classrooms and high-fived and applauded them for their hard work. I guess what I was most impressed with is the fact that as you read the articles and stories about these young men and how they conducted themselves off the field as well, and how articulate you were with the media, very impressive, and certainly represented not only Preble High School, but the district extremely well, and I felt very proud, and I too agree that there was not a loser that day. So congratulations.
No pressure, the goalie. It's the mother of the goalie here. I can't imagine being the mother of the goalie. No pressure. All right, next we'll do the roll call. Sandy?
Jeffrey?
Here.
Fran?
Hi.
Warren?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Shaka?
Here.
Maloney?
Here.
Becker? Nivani?
Here.
Hanel?
Here.
All right, we have six board members at the table. Andrew Becker is excused. Also joining us at the table is Brianna Nivani, who's president of the city student council from Preble, and Tricia Hanel, who also is on the inner-city student council from Southwest. To my left is Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent, and also Sandy Heller, our board secretary. Next, we'll approve meeting minutes. We have a regular board meeting from October 21st, 2013. Special board meetings, October 28th and November 4th. Special board meeting closed sessions, October 21st, October 28th, November 4th, and a public hearing on October 28th. I entertain a motion for approval of those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Next is communications. We have no communications to place on file this month. And next we'll move to the monitoring reports, which will be facilitated by Celestine Jefferson.
Thank you so much, Brenda. If everyone could come forward, and Mark, and the principals.
Teachers?
If there's, yeah, we should have a couple of teachers as well. And then I'll let Mark introduce everyone.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight to provide our second school monitoring report. I'll just go ahead and provide the opportunity for folks to introduce themselves. We have five schools represented here this evening. We'll get into a little bit more about what connects those schools, and certainly some of the things that they're working on relative to continuous school improvement. So if you don't mind, Chris, I'm starting out.
I'm Carissa Gracia. I'm a literacy coach at Howe Elementary School.
I'm Jamie Tyrell. I'm a literacy content leader and bilingual teacher at Sullivan Elementary.
My first-year principal, Sullivan.
Tammy Vadas, principal of the Early Learning Center.
I'm Christine Fabian, I'm the principal at Howe Elementary.
Marshall Moltz, principal at Jefferson.
Ellen Van Pei, principal at Tink.
That's it?
And Terry and Lisa are in the back there.
Terry and Lisa are supporting us in the back as well. For the general public, I just offer some context to this evening's presentation. The report, as you heard, and presentation comes from five schools, the Early Learning Center, Sullivan, Howe, Jefferson, and Tink. The board report is organized, and the presentation is organized into two major sections. The first section is an executive summary. The executive summary is a macro-level view of the school's current performance, as well as the role of stakeholders and the tasks to be implemented. The second section is a school-level focus, a more micro-level view of some of the specific things that the buildings are working on. We also recognize in that section celebrations, growth opportunities, and then plan next steps as they move forward. The goal of the presentation is to serve as a communication tool to the Board of Education relative to the implementation of the strategic directions that were put forth by the Board of Education. Our efforts are directed towards implementation of best practices and also centered around continuous school improvement. Therefore, each school conducted an assessment of their student achievement data, PALS assessment, phonological awareness literacy screener was one of those assessments. And schools analyzed their performance, and their performance indicated significant opportunity for growth for all of the schools, with the exception of Jefferson. Jefferson achieved vision at that assessment, which means that students, excuse me, which means greater than 85% of their students met end-of-year benchmark. WKCE reading and WKCE math was also an assessment that the schools assessed, and all schools at this point have opportunity for significant growth relative to that measure as well. Each school then worked on implementing, planning and assessing and implementing research-based best practices. The following tasks are consistent across the buildings, which are daily posting of high-quality learning targets, student understanding of those learning targets, and work to be accountable. Teachers using the assessment data in informing instruction, and then also all staff will work to improve student learning through professional learning communities. So at this point, I'd like to be able to provide you a stakeholder view of the continuous school improvement process, and that's where Carissa will come into play.
I was involved in the creation of our school plan, our school improvement plan, beginning in June, when we had our school improvement planning days. And at Howe, we've always been really attuned to what the teachers need, both in terms of their own professional learning and what they need to help move student learning forward. So last spring, we took a look at getting some feedback from the teachers, and that feedback then was shared with our SIT members, and as an SIT, when we sat down to create some of the action steps in the school improvement plan, we had that data from our teachers. So speaking from, you know, the teachers in the building, and I think their viewpoints were very well taken into account when we looked at the action steps that we were going to be putting into place. Also, I think what's been really great about this process is that now, with the use of Indistar to help guide our school improvement plan, across the district, there's a seamlessness in terms of where our schools are moving and what our focus is. So that just helps us be a better community when we look at moving schools forward. So I've really been very impressed with the process so far. It's still very new for our building. It's only November. So, you know, we rolled out our school improvement plan to staff in August, and we reflected on where we are in November, and we still have a long way to go, but we feel very secure with the four indicators that we're looking at, the four vision cards that we're looking at, and knowing what our next steps are.
Pardon me. I am a bilingual teacher, and I also serve on the school improvement team at Sullivan Elementary, and I'm very honored to be here on behalf of teachers tonight. I just wanted to inform you about our process at Sullivan and how all staff has input in our school improvement team. We have a great system set up, where we have our small school improvement team. We then expand into a larger BLT to discuss issues, and then our BLT members each have a small group.
I could just interpret the acronyms.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure.
And whoever wrote the report, I mean, you guys did a great job identifying all the acronyms in the report, but it just didn't speak, because we do televise these and people do watch these.
Absolutely. Not a problem. I'm just so used to saying them.
I know.
Yes, I've been involved in our school improvement plan, which is the SIP, and we have a great communication system. So our school improvement team meets, and then we expand and meet with our building leadership team. So we bring what we decide at our small group and bring it to a larger leadership team at Sullivan. We are a very large staff, so then each of our building leadership team representatives meets with a small group, and that is a great environment for all of the teachers to be able to provide their input in a non-threatening way and make sure that everyone's being heard. Then we take those small groups back to the building leadership team and eventually back to the school improvement team. So it's been a very collaborative process. Using our school improvement plan, we restructured our committees. So as a teacher leader, I am on our assessment and accountability, where we're constantly monitoring data, which is part of our vision cards to be constantly monitoring data. And I guess, I don't know if there's anything else, but I've been very honored to be on this team, and I feel that our communication at Sullivan and I speak for all teachers, that this plan has been wonderful, being rolled out with the communication process at hand.
I'd like the opportunity to provide the principal perspective, or, oh, sorry.
Just one question. The group, the BLT that has the small groups, are those small groups different from your collaborative learning teams?
Yes.
Those are just planning teams?
Yes. They're like grade-level teams, communication teams, to make sure that everybody's hearing the message. Yes. Yep.
Okay, I'm up. Thank you, Dr. Langenfeld and the board, for the opportunity to address you this evening. I speak on behalf of the five schools. They said they had an election. I didn't see any hands raised, but.
You weren't good at reading.
I was there. That's what I don't get. But I'm very proud to represent these five schools. There's a long tradition of providing quality education to the Green Bay area from these five schools. One, just the past five, six years with the ELC, but the others who have been around for decades, many decades. So the history is there. These schools have a lot of things in common, yet they're all unique, and while we celebrate our successes, we know there's a lot yet to be done and much to accomplish to get our kids to be college, career, and community-ready. And so among those steps that are common for these five schools is to increase students' engagement in the learning process by ensuring their understanding of the high-quality instructional learning targets and by refining the use of PBIS and CHAMPs throughout their school day. And one of the other common things was to improve teachers' abilities to use formative assessment data, including running records, to inform and guide instruction. And we'll accomplish, we have plans to accomplish this mostly through intense professional learning. So in order to improve student achievement and close those gaps, the professional learning and collaboration is around universal instruction and intervention instruction is really a priority. And those actions are critical to our success in those goal areas. And while doing all of these things, we, all five schools need to be aware and address some obstacles that students face within their school days and that impact our schools, such as high poverty. Every, each school is 85% or more poverty, I believe. Mobility, I think each school has greater than 25% mobility. Changes in staff and language barriers. But I firmly believe through the dedication and hard work of our staffs that we continue to move forward and with the goal of increasing achievement and closing those gaps on behalf of the students that we serve.
Thank you. So that's a presentation. At this point, we know that you've been provided with the narrative, and we'll turn it over to the board for any specific questions or follow-ups.
Okay. Questions, Mike?
Somebody talk about the special education gaps.
Overall, or at a particular school, how they're used with it at their particular school?
Yeah, if each of the schools want to talk about it, but I mean, that's always been one of our biggest gaps, is the special ed. It is, and it exists in a lot of the schools up here tonight. And I can only speak for what we do at Sullivan, but our main thing that we're trying to accomplish is to bring those staff members and then those students to be seamless with what we're doing. So all of our special ed kids, except our severe population, receive their first-line instruction from the regular classroom. And then their intervention instruction and IEP minutes are then provided by the special education teacher. So we're trying to create that seamlessness from kindergarten on, because if you start at fifth grade, they're already, it's too late. So we have to get them at five years old, and then hopefully those gaps narrow as the students move forward. I don't know if anybody has. Yeah, the other schools like to kind of like do, the other schools to comment, too.
Our catering would be very similar to what Mike described in the sense that we want those students, as well as the staff, to have that push-in approach for that universal instruction, and then we pull out for a set number of IEP minutes as well to maximize where some of those gaps in their learning are, as well as to help them, and those individual skills that they need, to make that a more solid base, just like Mike had described.
Ours is similar. We follow the same model. The idea is to do that push-in as much as possible. Sometimes that can get difficult with scheduling, when you have a large number of students. So that can be a challenge at times, but that's what we want to do, to try to allow students to be in a restricted environment.
And if I may add, our collaborative process to include the regular teachers and the special ed teachers to meet regularly to get these students on the same path is crucial. And I think, I speak on behalf of our school, I am, you're doing fantastic with that, and I'm just so honored to have that time to be able to sit down and focus on those special needs kids.
Other questions? Mike, Chris, sorry.
Gone for a little while.
I know, I forgot you already.
A couple things. The first one, though, if I read this, right, Jefferson did a little bit better than others. And whether you've analyzed that, the first thing that came to my mind is that they've had a strong adopter school program for years there. Now, I know other schools may have that. I do know they do have people coming in to read, such as Mr. Becker. But had been any thought about that?
Well, the Jefferson adopters have been in the school for more than a decade, and volunteers do come in regularly, at a minimum once a week, connecting with students in the classroom, and the focus is on literacy and math, where teachers prepare work that the volunteers support the students with. And there are targeted students that connect with that volunteer on a regular basis. So while it's not a school-based intervention, there is some support in an intervention sort of way for students. And I think that that help has created a sense of culture in school that needs the CLT process or the collaborative learning team process in a unique way to Jefferson.
I'd be remiss if I didn't take advantage of that opportunity. I think the beauty in doing reports this way is to be able to learn from other schools. And that was intentional, so your point, Dr. Wagner, is perfect. How can the other schools learn from what Jefferson has done? And then also, what do we do to support that from a district-level standpoint? I think it's Dan Kocas and extended learning and community engagement opportunities. So that's been the beauty from my seat, as far as working with these folks. They've been doing heavy lifting, but certainly that can be a service that we look at district-wide and hope to replicate as well.
If indeed, that is a real positive ingredient. We're assuming it is. Second question, if I may. We're talking mostly here about academics, but it's always been my bias, until kids behave, they're not going to learn in school. And that wasn't addressed here, and I do know we have a lot, many youngsters that come to school that have a hard time playing together, let alone sharing and paying attention in class. I'm guessing that must be, is being addressed in some fashion, and maybe someone could address that.
Absolutely. I'll address that from the teacher's standpoint. Pardon my voice. At Sullivan, we are rolling out the, well, district-wide, excuse me, all the schools sitting up here are using the PBIS behavior plan, positive behavior intervention and support, and as well as CHAMPs, a lot of acronyms. It's a very intense behavior program, filled with expectations and consequences. And from a teacher's standpoint, we started training last year in CHAMPs, and we are fully rolling it out this year at Sullivan, and I can tell you that has been extremely helpful for me and my colleagues. And we are doing professional learning on that constantly all year long this year. So I don't know if any other schools wanted to add in.
I can add in from the 4K and the 5K elementary perspective. We are starting CHAMPs also at the Early Learning Center this year, and we're seeing a lot of seamlessness in the 4K and 5K classrooms as far as the same language that's being used with voice volume in the hallway and in the classrooms, and the types of activities in, when they're doing their guided reading centers or their small group instruction, just the expectations that the students have at that four-year-old and five-year-old level. We've really been seeing an increase in the positive behaviors in the classroom, and that, our goal is then that it transfers over when our students do go back to their home schools in first grade, being Sullivan, Eisenhower, and Dan's. They're all PBIS and CHAMP schools, so they'll already have that common language going into their home schools then.
Tink also does CHAMPs and PBIS, and this was our first year of CHAMPs, and we saw a very large drop in our IC referral rate in September and again in October compared to last year. So when you look at the impact of CHAMPs, we had solid numbers that showed, you know, instead of, say, maybe 10.6 referrals a month in September, we were down to, I think it was, I can't remember the exact number, it was about 4.2 referrals a month. So it was a big drop as a result of CHAMPs.
Yeah, ask the third question.
You may.
Could you give us a synopsis of CHAMPs?
Sure.
Or someone?
What CHAMPs is, is it is more of a classroom-type of a system where teachers will, what we call kind of front-load, they'll help students understand expectations before they do an activity. So before they would get together in a whole-group session, teachers would go through the expectations so students would understand what to do. If they're transitioning to a small group, where they're then going to be working with partners, they would talk to students about what those expectations are with their partners before they do that. So they're setting students up for success before they do that. And then afterwards, there's usually a system related to PBIS, where then they can reward them for positive behaviors. In our school, we have little papers called "gotchas," where we catch them being good. So it's always letting them know in front of the activity what they're supposed to be doing. If they're going down the hall to the bathroom, they remind them of the expectations before they go. So again, they can be successful. They know exactly what's expected of them. They know exactly what's expected of them in each different area and each different activity.
Thank you.
Okay, Brenda?
I'm curious to, to hear, I know a lot of teachers are, and administrators, sorry, I'm saying voice problem. A lot of teachers and administrators are always worried about piling more things on and making work harder. And I'm just curious your perspective. I know it's early, it's just November, but, but when you look at these vision cards and this year, you're focusing on just three of the items and one on each of those three cards. And do you see this as helping you move your work forward? Does it, does it make your work harder? Are there things that we could do to make it so that it's, that it is moving your work forward? I mean, the intention of this is not to pile things on, but to help sort of give that focus and direction so that when you are working, you're working more effectively and more efficiently hopefully.
I know that right now in education, it's professional learning and collaborative environments are so extremely important. And so yes, there's a lot of new things on. However, all this information is very important and I do certainly appreciate the times that we can sit down and learn. And the, the process, especially this year with focusing on high-quality learning targets, that has been something for me personally that I've enjoyed learning about. However, I really feel that the disconnect comes into then spending all this time learning professionally, spending all this time in collaborative groups. When is that time for me to sit down and personally visualize what my day is going to look like in my classroom? You know, am I going to be able to think through exactly how my math lesson is going to look? Am I able to plan out the language that I'm going to use in my mind? And I feel that that's the part that we're really missing as teachers, is that time to put the art into what we do. And, and I'm not discrediting the professional learning and the processes that we go through because they are so extremely important. I just feel that we're missing that crucial part of the art of teaching and giving professionals time to really look at their individual students in the way that makes sense to them, not the way that makes sense to a coach that's telling us how to put in our data.
I think, I think it's really become quite a balancing act in education for our teachers today. And they all, as Jamie said, realize the importance of everything that we do, but it's trying to find the balance so that they can do the art of teaching. And I, I think she spoke very well. Specific to, to this process with the vision cards and then using Indistar, these are Title One schools up here today. We've always had school plans, all-encompassing school plans. So this is a bit of a change for us in terms of the type of document that we use to plan, not necessarily a change in the process. We, we still have a school planning process. So it's, it's moved us forward. I think what it's done is it's put everybody in the same place across the district. We're all using the same document. We're all looking at similar vision cards. So in that respect, it's been very positive. The Indistar process and the vision card process is really not necessarily an add-on. We just had to find a way to meld it with what we were already doing because we didn't want to lose what we have been doing. So we had to meld that, so.
Okay. Michelle?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking.
With what Mr. Fraley and Jamie shared as well. But what I will kind of add on to what they were talking about is when we look at, specifically at our building, our school improvement team that meets twice a month, what this process has really helped us do is streamline our work and given us a vision and a focus. So while it may have changed a little bit of what teachers do in the classrooms, it has helped us become more seamless across our building. And it feels like we're all working towards the same goals now, rather than in the past when our school improvement team would meet, we would kind of jump around from different topic to topic. Now we know we're always coming back to these vision cards. So while it is a change and it is something new, it is refreshing to know that it's something that we will keep coming back to and it really helps us focus.
Just a, a comment, as, as we think about teaching and learning, there is truly an art and a science. And when you're really in the learning stage, you're not practicing the art because you're trying to learn. Then when you move to that implementation and standard work, especially when you get to that third phase of standard work, is when you really can start to move that. And I think one of the pieces, as we move forward as a district, that whole focus around teaching and learning and having that whole department around continuous improvement, our intent is to stay the course. And so we want to get where you are with every single teacher so that they have that opportunity and time. Because every time you keep introducing a new initiative, a new, a new, a new, you're in the learning phase. And that's the science part. That's the structured part. But the art comes when it, when it becomes that secondary level of implementation and standard work. And so we're, we're planning to stay the course. So please know that. And that's very supportive to know too.
And I think the recognition as well, and Dr. Lande said it well, the recognition that it does have to be a balancing act in terms of how do we communicate and what are we communicating? And, and also being reflective to the current, you know, feedback from staff members. And, and how do we take that into consideration as we plan professional learning for principals? So principals can provide professional learning for less, for their staff members. So it's certainly not lost on us that there is, there's a lot to balance.
Any other questions from the board? Mike?
I'm going to ask the same question I asked the teachers and principals at our three schools that were here last month. We invite you back a year from now and you're here. What do you hope to tell us? And I'd like someone from each school to tell us that.
It's a good job.
You're not grabbing that mic, are you, Tim?
Well, I, I would hope that we'd be telling you that our, our gaps are closing and that our achievement is rising. And I think that it may take some time. I don't want to say a year from now, we're going to be back here and, and doing somersaults and, and look at us. But I think having students understand the learning targets is a big step in the right direction because they can't learn if they don't know what it is that you want them to learn. And I think teachers are realizing that and they're, they're breaking those down to be student-focused instead of teacher-focused. So I would, I would hope we'd come back next year and say our gaps are closing. That's our goal.
Okay. Other schools?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I was going to say, you know, to improve our achievement, improve student achievement. And as Mike said, it's not going to happen all at once, but to, to continue to see those gains because we are working awfully hard to try to make that happen. And one of the interesting things that we've seen with the learning targets, you know, we're posting them, we're taking data on how frequently we're posting them, but we are seeing that students are struggling with the understanding. So then that forces us to go back and see, well, how do we need to change how we're presenting them? And that is something that is a piece of learning for the staff to take a look at, as Mike said, make it more student-friendly. So trying to adjust our instruction based on our student response as we go month-to-month. And I think we're going to continue to see positive results as we go through it.
I'll add to that by saying that in our building, leadership teams, we do feel like the vision cards have focused our work. And so a year from now, I hope that where we are in an area of intervening or intervention, that we move and there's some observable movement on the vision card. If we're at baseline, we expect that we move to the max level up, that we're not still a level of concern in areas that we are currently, that we see some weak and observable moments in vision cards.
The point that I would, I would echo a similar point to what these individuals have shared, but I would also piggyback off of one of the questions that was asked of the board, which was related to student behavior. Because I think when we would also talk about the PBIS pieces, the CHAMPs pieces, some of the restorative practice pieces that are being done across the district, looking at how are we improving student behavior? Because we all know that if we have behavior under control, we can maximize our learning. And so I think it's also important that we share that lens of data as well when we look back to the table.
In addition, I'm also going to add that parent involvement piece. I think that that's a crucial piece to our students building their foundation and improving their learning throughout their educational careers. So providing parents with the tools that they need to help their, their children continue learning at home and bringing school at home and making that connection to it.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? All right, thank you all for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And when you go back to your schools, thank your staffs for us, so we know they're working hard.
Excellent representation from the teachers.
Yes. Kudos. Yes. You know, it's funny because I was looking at the, that's a different item. Yes, it concludes my report.
All right, thanks, Celestine. Next is the superintendent's update.
Thank you. I'm going to start with the December calendar. We're moving quickly into the month of December, the end of the year. On December 2nd, we have the Teaching and Learning Work Session right here in the boardroom beginning at 5:30. And then we will follow that immediately with the organizational support work session meeting. And then on December 12th, the ICSC, which is our student council from the district, will be meeting here in the boardroom at 7:00 AM. These students really love to get up early in the morning and we join them, so.
Love it.
We just love that. And then on December 16th, it's our regular board meeting beginning here at 5:30. The district winter recess is December 23rd, that Monday through the 1st of January. So that's the calendar. And I do have a couple of discussion items. Would you like me to move into those? I'm going to invite Mark Smith to come up. I know that along with board member Celestine Jeffries and Mike Blacka, they have been working collaboratively. And Mark and I have been in consultation as well as to how to even improve on the monitoring reports. And we have some ideas and I know that you folks have been working together. So I'm going to turn it over and let you have further discussion so the rest of the board can hear where this is going.
Want me to start or do you want to?
You can go ahead and start.
All right, very good. Well, just as, as a matter of update, board member Jeffries and, and board member Blacka and I met after our first monitoring report and I think would, would continue to meet after the reports. Ultimately, our goal is to provide a meaningful communication tool to the Board of Education and certainly recognizing that this is our, our first initial year of this type of continuous school improvement process. We, we still have some opportunities for growth. And I think one of the things that we recognize is we want to provide a, a report that is understandable, it's meaningful. And to that end, we talked about, really in a nutshell, less narrative and more of a visual type of presentation. And that could be done easily with really trying to look at replicating our vision cards and showing you where they are relative on the vision card. So you could, could essentially see where they, where they assess themselves, where their goal is, and then what are the clearly articulated tasks that are going to lead them to that particular growth. I think one of the things that's really been beneficial for me, which we still would like to keep in tune, is that communication process. I think one of the, the unintended consequences of these reports is it's really forced at the building level, leadership teams to push out information to collaborative leadership teams, which would be grade-level teams, and then to seek feedback and come back. And that has informed the, the process. So that would be just one piece that we need to continue to keep our eyes on.
And just to piggyback on what Mark was saying, so the conversation essentially centered around how we can make the reports, quite frankly, as Mark said, less narrative, more bullet points. So that when people are coming here, I mean, we have a narrative, but so often I find the three and a half years that I've been sitting here, that what the, what the staff members actually say is many times more informative than what they liked. And so what I, what I would like to do is to have bullet points, especially that is very task-focused. When you read the reports, especially when it gets into each school, you see some of the tasks that they're doing in order to accomplish the various vision cards. And quite frankly, I think that they can very succinctly say on one or two PowerPoint panels what those tasks are. And then we would have an opportunity to ask some questions about how the tasks are going. I, I thought tonight's presentation, it was very clear, I think it was probably clear the last time, but you know, we heard it again this time, as Mark just said, that, that there is actually a little bit more communication between various levels of staff members in the building. Nevertheless, I think as a school board, when we did the whole vision card thing, I think that we need to see what tasks are coming out of that. I'm going to assume that they're going, that they're meeting. I'm going to assume that they're collaborative. I'm going to assume that they're using research. They talk about it all the time. We talk about it all the time. I want to see what those tasks are. But it is not the Celestine show. So I, we, I wanted to make sure that everyone was thinking some of the same things that I was thinking. Mike and Mark and I had talked about it and just to get your input on how we can go forward in a more succinct manner.
Comment?
Yeah, go ahead. Lay it on me.
I, I appreciate what you're doing. I mean, I'm a great believer that less is more. And, and you have too much thrown in front of you, it's hard to, to go through and pick out what's truly meaningful. And I, I do like, at least for my style, I like the bullet points and, and succinct comments there. It's much more helpful for me at least.
I think one, one of the points I think that we talked about when we met a week or so ago is that, you know, in our previous reports, school by school, there was 15 pages of data, which is way too much. But I think maybe, I think we have to guard against not giving the board enough data. I mean, a lot of it is, the information we're, we're getting is fairly general. So I think as we go along, I think I would like to see some data to support what the principals and teachers are telling us. And then kind of long-range, as we're looking ahead, I think we kind of envision like next year, not necessarily having the same grouping of schools. We may not need to hear from every school, or there may be different groupings such as the, the Spanish immersion schools, maybe would be a grouping. Just so, that's kind of looking ahead. But I think, I think we do need, we need some data. We don't need 15 pages of it.
You could certainly add the data in a, perhaps an appendix. So people could go back and look at it if they wanted, chose to.
Well, and you know, we're, this is the other thing too, because many of the schools are just now getting themselves on the road of the vision cards, not interrupting, Michelle. But because they're not, they're on that, they're just starting on, you know, if I may make a Wizard of Oz analogy, the yellow brick road, right as she landed in the town, right? They're not there yet. So they don't really have that data that then goes right with the vision cards.
She didn't land on the witch though.
No, didn't, right. No, no, land on the witch, that's right. So, you know, I, but I think that's why the tasks will help us to figure out also and help them to figure out. This is one of the things that I thought about with, when Mark and Mike and I had talked. I want this document to not, I don't want them to feel frustrated creating the document. I want them to say, okay, well, here's what we do. Does that make sense? Yes, it makes sense. No, we're not doing that. Let's go back. I want, it would be nicer if the document ended up being kind of a learning thing for them as well.
We're basically doing what they're doing with their students on CHAMPs.
Yes.
Right? I mean, that's, that's what we all need, to know what the law for that law.
Right, right, that's right. Yes, yes.
An explanation before we get started.
Yes, that's exactly right. Michelle?
One of the, was, as Mark and I have talked, I mean, Michelle actually answered your question, Mike, with what I envisioned.
She did.
She spoke to the fact, and if we had that as a visual, she said, we're at the concerned intervention level. And we want to be here. And if you could put that easily, just that line on a scorecard so that you could see where they are. And then I, you know, they already have defined specifically what action steps they're taking. And their tip is part of their school improvement plan. So it would, to speak from that, you know, obviously some schools are going to be, as you noted, Jefferson is in perhaps a different place on some levels than other schools in terms of just starting point. But again, it's that moving forward down the yellow brick road, no matter where you start the journey, that's really important as well. So that's why when they speak of the vision cards, I think it would be very simple to not necessarily worry as much about the metric as where they're moving.
Right.
You know, again, because the metric may look a little different because of where you start for some schools, but just a thought. Again, because the metric may look a little different because of where you start for some schools, but just a thought on that as well. Mark and I have talked about that as well.
And I think we definitely need some work on insight statements. I actually thought that Chris had an insight statement tonight about Jefferson, about the, the.
Adopt a school.
Sorry, say that again.
Adopt a school.
Adopt a school.
Jefferson.
Yes, that's right.
Then there's Future Phoenix and Ben Swish Backpack Program. Jefferson has huge.
A few things, so, you know, is that helping? You know, I mean, I think that was, that was, that's a nice kind of lead into a good insight statement, so I think we need some work there. But that is coming, I know that's going to come along if we kind of take a step back and just make a list. But what do other people think?
I guess, one of the things, and I don't necessarily, maybe it ties into the insight statements. I don't necessarily have an answer for this, but I think the vision card C with the learning targets and the vision card D, professional learning communities, those are actions. And somehow, I'd like to know that these actions that we are requiring of our teachers are doing something in terms of improvement student achievement, primarily. I mean, that's what they're intended to do, those two. So I, and again, they're early, so they're not going to have data necessarily, but in the early stages, the insight statements could be, somebody had one.
Ellen?
Was it?
Yeah.
That said, like, by, yeah, it was Ellen, that by making sure that our students understand the learning targets, we're realizing that we're not even to step one of the teaching, and that they're redirecting how they're teaching by the fact that the children don't even understand what it is they're supposed to be doing that day. And that that has, that that has changed the teacher's approach, and I guess I would be interested then in hearing even, you know, anecdotal stories of those kinds of things, too. But at some point, once we get further on down the road, and I don't know how you attach data to learning targets directly, but somehow, I think there needs to be some indication that these benchmarks, these targets that we're aiming for are improvement student achievement or whatever.
Now, here's a thought for those, you know, maybe people in the audience that aren't as familiar with what we're talking about, and people watching on television. What is a vision card? I'll put in one paragraph thing up there as we start, what is a vision card? Because we keep talking about vision cards, and if you're watching on TV, you probably have no clue what a vision card is.
Or just a sample of it.
Just a sample, just what the three that we're talking about.
What a vision card is, and why we use it.
I would actually, this was on my notes, things, I would like to have the vision cards, the ones that we're talking about in these reports, attached to the board minutes. I mean, it doesn't have to be, you know, either directly to the report, or just have them as a separate attachment. Because I, you know, when people are talking, I'm thinking, oh, you know, I'm trying to remember back, and I don't have those things memorized, so it would be nice to have that for us to refer to, so that we get more familiar with what's out there.
And, you know, we're sort of envisioning kind of a PowerPoint thing, so that would play nicely, too.
I think that, yeah, I think the conversation tonight captures both what Celestine and Mike said, but also what Dr. Langenfeld and I discussed in terms of, you know, really trying to have a visual, so that folks understand the measures, which are the scorecard or the vision card, and where are they relative to metrics embedded within that. But also, to add, what Dr. Warren mentioned, it's very important to understand that what we do in strategic direction C are really those tasks. So high-quality learning targets, checking for student understanding of those learning targets, teachers refining their instruction based upon that student learning target is going to improve PALS. It's going to improve WKCE in reading and math. It's going to improve all of those outcomes, which you find in B. But I think having that visual and making it very succinct will help continue to message that and create, I think, a little bit more understanding to what buildings are doing. So it works, to me, it makes a lot of sense. And it also is a matter of reference, it will help consolidate and really focus the work for the administrators, too. So that'll be a savings on their end, in terms of the amount of work that they have to do. They're working with these vision cards, so they're readily aware of how does it work, and how does it align to their tasks, what makes sense. It's not burdensome. If anything, it's really consolidating some of the work for the buildings as well.
Well, and I would hope that there would be opportunity for them to give feedback, whether or not the process is helpful.
Yeah.
Or a hindrance.
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
And whether or not the professional learning is relevant to the process, or where that needs to be.
I think we appreciate the board's approach this year to the school monitoring reports, because it's provided us that flexibility to continuously, you know, revise them, but also to know that it is a work in progress this year. So I don't feel as if any changes or tweaks is really upsetting, we're, you know, upsetting the process. We're continually trying to reflect and improve as well in that communication process.
Our goal is transparency and accountability. We feel, you know, everything that we're talking about, even in the early stages, we at least have a plan to measure it, and that's maybe something we've not always done for every step of the way in the past. And so even, we may not have the answer of where we are yet, but at least we know how we're measuring and what kind of data is being collected, to know if it makes a difference, you know, so.
I, oh, the Indistar is being referred to all the time, and I really have no, I couldn't tell you what Indistar is, and I was just wondering if we could have a presentation just on, so we can see the data that's put in and how the data is used and that kind of thing, because it's, every time it's mentioned, I think, hmm, I wish I knew more about that.
I believe we did do one early on. Yeah, Lisa Bohm.
That was the meeting I was missed.
But I think, I think.
But you were there, asked several questions.
No, I think that's important.
Indistar, yes, it is, and it's becoming.
If we could have a refresher of her medial Indistar.
But actually, did we actually have, lay eyes on Indistar? I can't recall.
I believe so.
I believe we did, too.
We did?
Yeah, it was, and I remember reading about the meeting.
But that shows that we need, though, another piece, because it does talk about how they're using it now, and really just from a general perspective, it's a web-based tool that collects the school improvement plans, and it aids in the development. But it's a tool, it doesn't replace the process of meeting with folks and talking about data. It's really an organizational tool and a resource to support continuous improvement. Keep the school improvement plan alive is really the intent of that tool.
Any other thoughts? Alrighty, we're going to rock and roll. Thanks.
Thank you. Meeting tomorrow, and the next group will begin the work.
To the news.
Perfect timing.
Good.
Very good. The second discussion item I have is a referendum discussion, and I'm going to invite Alan Wager to join us at the table here.
And Mike's coming up, too.
And Mike as well. He has lots of papers.
Actually, he does, has a stack.
We only planned 30 minutes, Mike.
Yeah, you're not going to read all of them.
He's about to filibuster. Oh, my. My sons were just complaining about this this weekend.
There we go, I don't know what it is.
Temperature and schoolwork performance.
Oh, man, yes. Certainly. We, I don't know if this is because you're passing this mic out, Mike, if this is where you're starting the presentation, that we have hot buildings and a lot of kids and staff in them in the summer months, but certainly understand what this is.
Before school?
Oh, even before school, in the summer. Fort Howard is running 24 hours a day.
Yeah. Cold buildings, too.
Yeah.
In the winter, I mean.
Yes.
In your update, I gave you a full page of information, more than maybe you wanted. If we go back to looking at the referendums in the past, the past referendum in 2010, as you know, the district, we had a $16.7 million referendum at that time. It was $11 million in capital projects and $5.7 million for technology. And it was split into two questions. One was for the technology, and one was for the capital projects. And as you went through that process for that referendum, you may remember, the chamber had two items that they were concerned about. One was that we were doing technology, and that the life of the asset, or the computers, was less than the number of years we borrowed dollars. Now, the only, the computers were maybe five years' life, and we borrowed over six years. So there wasn't a big variation in that. And we also, as you may remember, got 0% interest on all of the dollars for that referendum also. So there was no additional interest on borrowing for those computers. The second item that the chamber had mentioned, and it goes back to the funding of maintenance projects. One of the items that was brought up is that in the last referendum, there were projects that were roofing projects, asphalt projects, smaller-type item projects, and that in the future, that they would support that referendum in the future to raise additional dollars in the district's operational budget to pay for those operating costs. And at that time, we had roughly $660,000 worth of money in the budget for operational facility costs. And over the last, since the referendum, right now, we have an annual budget of $3.5 million. And so we have, again, listened to what the chamber had to say with that, and again, are able right now to fund the operational facility projects through the general fund budget. The items that you have on the list that we provided certainly are not small-dollar items and operational annual items. These are the large projects that we have in the district, roughly $72.4 million of projects that we do not believe we have the available funding within the general fund budget to complete these projects. And so the discussion for tonight, again, is to talk about a future referendum that would be for the coming, you know, for the coming year.
April 1st.
April 1st. My discussions with Mike Clark, our W Baird, we looked at, you know, the ranges of $10 million, $20 million, $30 million, and what the funding would do for that. Because of the way we have our debt structure, if you remember the steps we've talked about, where, you know, every three years, another step, where you can add, you could have a referendum and add on to that to keep that tax levy rate to the debt service level. And in my discussions with Mike Clark, we would have the ability with up to a $30 million referendum, and would still be able to have the same tax levy rate per thousand for debt service that we currently have. So there would be no increase in the tax rate. Certainly, if we did not have a referendum, that tax rate would continue to go lower each year as we pay off the rest of our debt. And timeline-wise, April 1st would be the first Tuesday in April, that would be the election date. In the past, the board has had to have a resolution to pass to have a referendum. Normally, that was 45 days, and now it is 70 days. So for us to have a referendum, we would have to have a resolution approximately in January, like January 18th, to have that passed by the board to hold a referendum on April 1st.
Would we have to have the specific wording of the referendum question or questions at that time?
I believe we have to have the questions and the dollars.
So let's say we had a three-part referendum, we would have to have the specific wording for that.
Correct. So by that time, we would need to know what the dollar amount is going to be and what the projects are. And how do you want to separate them into one question, two questions, or multiple questions?
Why April and not November, a 14?
We could wait till November. Our point was to get the dollars, so we could start with some of the projects in summer. Otherwise, we'll be waiting a whole.
Another year.
And the reason we don't have the election in February in the past, there has been, you know, concern from other parties that, you know, to not have the referendum on the April date was, you know.
Well, the primary, if you have it on the primary consideration is, is a lot of people, the snowbirds who have gone to Florida, they're not there. There are a few people that, fewer people that vote in a primary, and so you should have it at an election when the most people vote.
Well, that would be November.
Well, it would either be April or November, but not a primary.
Yeah.
The fewer the people that vote, the easier it is for a small block to control outcome.
And now with the new 70 days before the resolution, it would be fairly difficult to have that ready for February.
Did that bill not pass, like, there was a bill in the legislature last year that mandated referendum only at general elections. I don't know if that bill ever passed.
No.
I think, I think one of the things, as we talked about this in the timeline, and I think you make very good points, the question that I have, as we look at the list, you start to recognize that the schools that are identified are indeed schools that we are moving the school year to very extensively. We know that, for example, when you look, we know the middle schools are in use a fair amount, and the temperatures really were getting extremely high. Some of the schools on the list up there, Nicolay, Tank, Eisenhower, they're our focus schools, and they are schools that we wish to extend the school year and make it comfortable so that both students and staff can learn. I can tell you from personal experience, having been over at Tank, as well as at Washington, that the temperature was oppressive. It was beyond oppressive, and there was no place to escape. Some of our schools do have portions that are air-conditioned, some of our schools do not, and many of the schools on this list have nothing right now. And that concerns me of waiting and waiting, and do we delay then the amount of time that we can utilize those buildings very successfully for kids if we wait? I mean, or do we run, you know, a concern that we won't have the voters out?
Well, Fort Howard in particular, next year, we're going to be adding 300 hours of instruction. There are portions of that school that aren't air-conditioned.
A fair amount.
Yes. And I think that that's, there's no way that we can go late into June or into August in a school that's not air-conditioned. That's just not fair to either the students or the staff.
At one time, a local populace would say, well, it's only hot for a short time in Green Bay. But even discounting the summer programs, it is getting hotter. I mean, you can't deny that fact. And again, kids do not learn well in those conditions, if at all. Which I should say, they learn much more limited, extremely hard for staff, especially when you get to the afternoons and for the students.
How many people would work in an office building without air conditioning?
All summer.
All summer.
Well, you have that end of it, and I think one could very easily take the populace to many of our schools in wintertime, and with the insulation and the glass that's there, nothing but cold air coming in.
The heat's not very good for your computers, either. Impressively hot temperatures on your computers. Take that very well.
Well, you know, when we're looking at a lot of these projects, we're not identifying them as adding air conditioning. We're identifying them as upgrading the HVAC systems. And the air conditioning and the human comfort is a piece of the projects. There's been a lot of, you know, research, and I passed out an old study about the temperature, but there's a lot of research on, you know, how older schools don't have the proper air exchange. By midday, the CO2 level is starting to diminish. Kids don't think as well anymore. There's a lot of updates. I have one from the EPA showing that, you know, if you have proper air exchanges and control the humidity, you reduce health. and control the humidity, um, you reduce health, um, effects. Um, a lot of kids with asthma has problems with, uh, schools that are not properly ventilated, don't control the, um, the air. You reduce absences and, um, reduce sicknesses by having proper mechanical systems. Um, there's also, um, the overall production and the health of the teachers with proper air exchanges and ventilation systems. There is reduced mechanical costs, and another, um, option, or another thing that we need to start thinking about is there is a new energy code coming out, and it was started this year in Illinois. Uh, next year is gonna probably be implemented in Minnesota, and probably the following year in Wisconsin, which will make us look at their energy usage of these buildings and will, at some point, force us to, you know, do something to cut back on our en- energy use in these other buildings. So, even though the, you know, human comfort is a big piece of it, um, there's a lot of other things to look at with student learning, and we're, you know, we're, there's a lot of talk about student achievement, and, um, there's a lot of studies out there showing that with the proper ventilation, proper, um, environment, that, um, student, um, learning, you know, will.
I, I just have a question. Um, with these HVAC systems, um, is there like a lifespan? Maybe a foolish question, I don't know. Is it something that typically in the industry, there's roughly a standard? Maybe you change them out every X number of years?
Yeah, they used to, you know, see approximately fifty years, and, you know, when we're looking at, you know, our middle schools like Franklin and part of Washington, those are well over those age limits.
Gone, gone beyond. Okay.
Well, I think when we, the last one, we replaced the boiler at Elmore, was that from nineteen twenty-eight or something? So, a lot of old.
Goodyear?
System.
I might point out another thing people don't think about in schools, people not in schools, I should say. Uh, when, when it's warm, uh, you have all those bodies generating even more heat.
Yes.
So, it sort of compounds itself, you know.
Right, and then, if we don't control the moisture in the buildings, you know, you could end up having, you know, more problems, those types of things, which we do battle. Um, and we, you know, need to run air conditioning in a lot of our schools just to maintain the humidity, and you're exactly right, when you get a lot of bodies in the small classrooms, um, the air exchange needs to be increased.
Have we had mold problems today?
We've been pretty fortunate that they've been minimal.
But they have been there?
Yes, we've had some.
Okay. Will the window improvements increase daylighting?
Yes, we would. Um, well, I shouldn't s- at Washington, they would, because Washington, they filled in a lot of the panels like they did at East and West. So, Washington would in, and, you know, Washington is a fairly dark building.
Right.
Um, Franklin is already, you know, pretty open, so we'd be replacing pretty much what's there.
Okay.
Um, but there's a lot, you know, in these schools, there are still the old single-pane windows. We know that we had done two test areas, uh, two summers ago, we had replaced the windows in the music area, and, um, prior to that, those rooms just cooked with the morning sun, and now that we replaced the windows and put some blinds in and did add some more air in those rooms, they're, you know, much more, um, livable now.
Um, I don't know if we're ready to discuss this tonight. I mean, I think the first two items on there, Washington and Franklin, are pretty self-explanatory what we're doing. Um, I'm interested particularly in the, on the next two in the system, Eisenhower and Baird. Uh, for more of an explanation on, say Eisenhower, a number of classrooms, then are the core areas adequate? Do we have enough land? Would it take away parking and playground? Um, and then Baird, obviously twelve and a half million, I think we've talked about an entire new facility on, next to it, and then eventually raising the other one.
And Chap was saying.
Yeah. Are we ready to have those discussions tonight, specifics on classrooms and capacity?
Um, I can just give you a brief update. All these, we have to refine more, we need to bring in, you know, the principals, um, you know, the team, the staff here and refine them, but the initial thoughts, for Eisenhower, for instance, um, add on approximately eight classrooms. Um, yes, we would have enough, um, core facilities, 'cause we did, in our last addition, we added on a separate commons and a separate, um, so we have a separate commons, separate gym there. Um, no, we do not have enough site. Um, we would have to probably build where the existing playground is. Um, what we would have to do is work with the city and see if we could move part of our playground, it may be even a small part of the addition onto the park property, uh, to the south. Uh, we had, this would be the same area that at one time we were looking at putting a community center on, and, uh, at that time, the city was open for us. And we may, you know, maybe the city has some other needs that maybe we could incorporate into the addition that would, um, supplement, maybe they, you know, need a, a park shelter room or something that we could make it into a neighborhood.
Would we bring the kindergartners back there?
Um, that would be the lo- the goal, is to try to bring the school back, but if it keeps growing as fast as it is, we may, you know, have to, you know, still leave them at the ELC. Um, you know, right now, they have some doubled-up classrooms, the goal would be to, you know, split up to get classrooms and, um, so we would need more land, um, we would have to redo the playground area onto the park property. Uh, was there other questions on I, that I missed on?
Um, then, and what are we talking about capacity at that school? That school would be getting pretty large.
Yeah, you'd be, you know, you'd be increasing the capacity by about two hundred.
So, what?
So, it would be the total capacity then?
Um, I didn't bring what the existing capacity is.
So, I'm at six hundred in policy?
Six hundred is our max.
It's, yeah. We looked at it earlier.
Yeah, I looked at it earlier, and I didn't bring my capacity for the school.
I don't know if that's a five-tier.
I mean, it must be over four now.
Capacity at, um, Eisenhower?
Why don't they grow it for?
They're o- they're over, considerably over, um.
But that's with ELC students.
Correct. So, if you look at the students, I'd have to look at the actual data. I love the number of classrooms that are doubled up right now in, um, in teams, and we have four classrooms at the Allen Martin Center.
Terry, do we, do we know though what the rated capacity of that school is right now?
I, I would have to look that up.
So, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
I can absolutely find that information, Mike.
Okay. I have it downstairs, I just didn't think about bringing that up.
I think one of the things, and we had a long conversation earlier today about this, defining capacity, I just think we need to have a shared understanding of what that means. And when you talk about double-up classroom, if I'm understanding this accurately, Terry, what it is is two sage classrooms together, so it's two small groups together with two teachers, is that accurate?
There'd be thirty, there'd be thirty students in one classroom with two teachers.
So, so for some of us who grew up in the day where we had thirty-five kids and one nun, that would be a small.
We had forty-two and one nun.
And, you know, they have, those nuns were good.
Me and me and none.
I had fifty-one when I was great.
But, but that's what you're saying is there would be thirty students and two teachers right now we have in some of the classrooms, but that would be a double-up.
Flashback.
Okay, flashback.
Would you talk a little bit about Baird, Mike?
Okay. Well, Baird, what we would look at doing is trying to repurpose the, okay, the one wing where the, um, kindergarten, I think we can use pretty much the way it is, um, there's two nice kindergarten rooms, um, the third area, the third room is kind of split up, which could be made into one, so you could.
Those are off to the left as you walk in the front end?
Correct.
Those are to the left, right?
On the other side of the gym.
Okay.
So, I think that whole wing could be, with some minor work, re- utilized and either be, end up being, um, a kindergarten wing or a four-K wing. Um, the gym, I would look at repurposing into a commons, 'cause it's really not adequate size for a gym, and then building, uh, a separate gym like we've done in the past. Um, in the existing building, the building was originally designed as an open concept building. And it, it has very low, um, rough structure, um, no ceilings. So, when it was cut up into classrooms, we've never really had a good mechanical system, because mechanical system was designed as an open concept, and it's always been a, you know, Band-Aid approach to the mechanical system. And with the low ceilings and anything, it's very difficult to run ductwork and lighting and everything.
There are classrooms without windows.
And very odd-shaped classrooms, and, um, so what we would try to do is open, you know, remove as much of the interior, and, again, we could rebuild part of it into larger classrooms, um, and move, you know, a pot of rooms and use an area for a library and art room, and then build onto that with a classroom wing, which, with more appropriate classrooms for, you know, the general classrooms. So, we would try to preserve as much of the original building and repurpose it and demolish as minimum as possible with, um, adding an addition onto it. And that's, you know, that twelve million is a, you know, a very rough estimate this time until we actually sit down and, um, you know, do a more specif- specific plan.
That's probably a year-long project, isn't it?
Construction-wise, yes.
I would think Baird would.
And what we would like to look at doing is, what we'd possibly doing is if we could, if we would add on a classroom wing, we would try to build that first. Um, we may have to move some of the students, and we haven't talked exactly which ones it would be, kindergarten students or younger students, and we can maybe move some of them for a year out to, um, prin- uh, yeah, principal piece, ELC. Um, or, you know, we maybe looked at doing the fifth graders, you know, we, that would have to be discussed with the principal and determine, but we could, if we have empty classrooms there, if we would plan on using those for a year, we could maybe move a portion of the students out there, but try to maintain most of the school while the addition is being built, and then come in the following year and rebuild the, the portion that, after the students move into the new area.
Are you saying definitively that Baird can be rebuilt at, at a reasonable price as opposed to tearing it down, starting from scratch, or is that something you, you still have to study?
Well, we're still studying, you know, the objective is to reuse as much of the existing building as we could by opening it up, reopening it back up and changing it into, you know, general use rooms. I think I said like art room and maybe a music area and, um, a library area and things that we could, um, and then build the general classrooms separate, connecting. We may have to, you know, demolish a portion of it to make it all fit together, um, but we haven't, you know, really studied it close enough, but the idea would be try to, you know, preserve as much as we could of the original building.
And that would be more cost-effective than?
It would be.
Tearing down and?
Slightly more cost-effective, I mean, it would be good to, you know, start from scratch, but the thing is, is Baird is in a very good location, and so, the site, you know, it's in a good neighborhood location, it has, it feeds, um, the other thing we need to do is look at raising, uh, capacity, uh, the usable space at Baird, because, um, you know, we're over our capacity there, and I think right now, we're, I looked at this morning, we're around four hundred, I believe, as a capacity, and, you know, we could turn that into, you know, something closer to six hundred.
It's a growing area, and I know that we have many requests for that area, we know that our little ones coming in, it's a lot of students in, in that area with the homes. It's a nice area.
If my memory serves me right, uh, Mr. Stengel, Lincoln School, most of this old school was torn down, one small section was saved, and, uh, quite frankly, it was more of a political decision than, if my memory serves me right, a good sound building decision. And I just, I just want to be careful as we go into this, not put money into something that we're gonna say later, we would've been br- better off tearing it down and starting over. That's all I want to have, be careful of.
Um, I want to talk about the funding of urgent projects that aren't on the list, and, um, I can give one example, I'm sure there are others in the district, but I'm somewhat familiar with the needs at Washington Middle School, and, um, some of them are profoundly needs. Um, yes, well, even then, there's a little detail I wanted to ask for clarification on, and that is, um, the covering of the pit in the auditorium. We have a, a donor who is poised to spend a good deal of money uncovering the pit at East High School, and I'm wondering what, where this originated, is this request to cover the pit, and that brings to mind whether, I understand that a lot of these things on the list are longstanding needs, and if they've been revisited recently to make sure that, that the need hasn't evolved.
Um, the pit cover was a request from years ago. It's not a permanent cover, it would be very similar to the one we built at Preble West, um, the one we're also looking at East, it would be a removable cover. So, the cover would go on for theatrical performances to extend the front of the stage, but for, um, musical performances, the cover would be removable and it'd still be used just as it is. So, it's a removable cover, it's not a permanent cover.
And we've had recent input from faculty there as to the need for that?
No, this would have to be revisited. Um, I did have a conversation with Lucinda Roberts regarding this, um, and, you know, what I told her is that this was a request that was made several years ago, that a lot of these requests, we've been, you know, just keep postponing year after year.
Yeah.
And, um, so, when we get down to the final, well, I shouldn't say the final, but when we get more into detailed planning, um, we need to pull in staff and get more input and finalize this.
So, our building, our, our major building projects aren't necessarily limited to what's listed. We have funds in the reserve or the general fund that could be tapped for other purposes that, that arise that would be beyond the scope of the referendum.
And if you, on the, on the handout we gave out, and I, the second page, our capital improvement projects, which are funded through the general fund, and that is part of the three point five million that is budgeted annually, and that's where we do our smaller projects, our roofing projects, you know, if there's a, you know, a thirty thousand dollar, you know, stage improvement project or something, those, we would go, do that on an annual basis.
So, I don't see Washington on that list either, in terms of a possible addition to the, the fine arts wing as, as the fine arts strand continues to evolve. We don't have an orchestra room at Washington Middle School.
Right. And I was just made aware of that, um, I had a, a tour over there with Travis and Lucinda about a week and a half ago, and, um, she had informed me that, you know, they're looking at expanding the program there. So, again, when we do the, the more detailed planning on here, we need to bring in all the, you know, people that have interests and get more input, and we may have to adjust those numbers to.
Certainly have to, um, address the growth of some of our innovative programs and how that would look once the, for example, the Webster folks in integrated art moving into the middle school population and what the needs would be.
I think in the last referendum, I think we gained some positive traction in the community by taking one point five million dollars out of the fund balance to apply that against the expenses in the referendum. Uh, for next timing, we, I would like to see some figures on how much we could take out of the fund balance and still keep our balance at fifteen percent, which is the core, our board goal. I think now it's eighteen to nineteen percent. And I'm not saying that I'm in favor of taking all of it, whether it's three million or four million, but I just would like to see that amount, and, so I think we can use that as maybe we can take something out of the fund balance.
Because it's roughly, a million dollars is about a half a percent, so, I'll get to the math.
So, there's, there's probably six, there's probably six million.
So, there's about six billion dollars.
Yeah, there's probably six.
Some, some of that's already been spoken for during.
Yeah, that's right.
But I think it's just a. But I think it's just to help us make some decisions.
And we have already discussed that too. We think that it was a good, a good gesture to the public that, you know, we're going to use some of the district dollars to fund those projects.
Just, just a quick question on the capital improvement projects. How do you, I mean, some of the things you can see, but how do you determine from a building's perspective, which things receive priority on the list? And so, for example, as we think about Washington and the expansion of the fine arts and so forth, who makes that decision and based on what, I guess is my question? Obviously asbestos isn't a good thing. I can see a number of things in here that are not good things.
Right.
But typically asbestos has been there more than a while. And as long as you don't lift it up and expose it, you can keep there a little while longer. Then my experience working in buildings in nineteen hundreds built, so just curious.
Well, some of the district-wide ones, the asphalt and roofing, we try to do a portion each year so we don't fall too far behind.
Yeah.
The rest of the projects, we get requests from the buildings. We get the requests from staff. You know, we look at, you know, getting input from between principals, Terry, Mark, any other staff to tell us, you know, to give us some, you know, feedback on where the importance is. Is it more important to do this project over another project? If it's, some of them are, you know, being dried because of curriculum changes. So those usually get top priority because they need them for, for the classes that are going to be either starting up or have started up. If there's code issues, like we're redoing the welding booths this year over at Preble because we came to a point that there was several years that they weren't being used and now that the curriculum is changing and welding is becoming more of a priority, we need to redo the booths to bring them up to code. So we look at those and, you know, we just try to feel all the parties that are at stake and try to weigh up which ones are the highest priorities.
And again, some dollars are held aside as a contingency just because we know something's going to come forward that isn't on the list.
Right, we're going to need it.
So I mean, if, I mean, if something's a higher priority, then it becomes the high priority.
But I have to say, in my sixteen years on the board, Washington started out when I was first on the board at the bottom of page two. It has finally worked its way up to the top of page one. And I agree with it, Washington and Franklin being priorities. I mean, these are things. But I do think that as you revisit the needs at Washington, that if they look through the lens of the Fine Arts Institute rather than, and find out what really needs to be done. And, you know, some of these things sixteen years ago were a good idea, but they may not be good ideas anymore. And I agree with you, Mike. I think we do need to take a look at the, the fund balance. And that we need to be, you know, if we've set the goal for fifteen percent and we have eighteen percent, it's nice to have that three percent cushion. On the other hand, I think as stewards of the taxpayer money, we need to be mindful that we don't want to ask for more money and still hang out with that eighteen percent. I don't think that's fair.
What would you like from the direction for management?
Well, I have a question before that. With the seventy-two million, are you saying the seventy-two million, these are projects that need to be done now? I don't have a sense of, you know, what grouping needs to be done when? Are we going for thirty million only because that's a dollar figure that is, keeps the tax rate flat? I, I need some rationale in here as, as I go out to the public.
And I think we look at the thirty million because we would never have enough time to do all of them, even in the next three years. If, you know, we went for a referendum of that total dollar amount. We, I think we, you know, my discussions with Mike Clark, you know, thirty, thirty million dollars to me seems, seems, you know, about the right amount before you get to the point where it's considered to be too high. I mean, we've had fifty million dollar referendums, a fifty-five million dollar referendum when we renovated the three high schools. I mean, we have had some, you know, larger ones, the Preble one in itself, I think was roughly twenty-five million dollars, I think, to renovate Preble. It's not a magic number, but it is just trying to look at it from the standpoint of, you know, if we have another referendum three, four years from now, to try to, over the long haul, try to reduce this amount to a reasonable amount, not trying to do it all at one time.
Well, I think we're going to have a job trying to sell the public on saying seventy-two million and, you know, what do we really need now? And what will we be coming back to ask you for in three years or four years or whatever? I, I don't know. I think a lot of discussion needs to go on in the public about that.
Although the sixteen million dollar referendum was drawn from a, a needs list of over sixty-two million, I believe. So I think they're.
I don't think they're telling us that we need to do seventy-two million. That's, these are just the priority lists.
Right, right.
A couple of things, I guess, that I, I would like to see, particularly when we're looking at the classrooms. Like chapels, you know, two-thirds is way down, but it says add classrooms. I think I would need to know, do we really need those classrooms because of IB? And if we don't put chapel on the list, in two years they're going to say, boy, we don't have any room for our kids. So I would think whenever we're, we're talking about expanding the capacity of a school, we would need to know how urgent that is when we're adding classrooms. I would like to see some recommendations from staff on how to split the referendum. Because I think if you look at referendums around the state, people like choices. I think referendum, you lump it all on one, people don't like that.
Right, they like both.
So I think I'd like to see some recommendations on how we would split it.
Yeah, I was thinking too, just at chapel, something that had occurred to me as I was just sort of going through this list and thinking about things. There's nothing for chapel for a renovation of the kitchen.
That was completed last summer.
They just did it.
They just did it? Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
I've been in, it's nice.
Yeah, then I have to go see it. And what, you know, so that, but that just brings something else to mind about when we, when we're thinking about these renovations, and this is just a question because I don't know the answer, what comes first in our mind? Is there a certain standard about what kind of kitchen they need to have? Do they have an auditorium that's separate from the gym? Do they have a lunchroom that's separate from the gym, which is separate from the auditorium? I mean, obviously we're talking about HVAC. Is there some, is there some way that we want all of our schools ultimately to look that we're striving for with this, with this list?
Well, I think it depends on what the student population is at these schools. I mean, we have smaller schools, for instance, like Jefferson, where we don't need a separate commons and a separate gym. But then when we get to larger schools, it gets very difficult to use them in combination because of the setup time. They need multiple lunch periods and then they start conflicting. So it's not like a one size fits all. We have to look at the population for each school. But as our schools have been getting bigger, we are looking at, you know, having separate commons and separate gyms where most of our schools have had combinations. We did that when we, you know, increased the capacities and added additions at Dan's, several, you know, back in the late nineteen ninety-eight. We did the same thing at Eisenhower. You know, most of our new schools have separate.
One final comment, if I may.
It might not be final, but go ahead.
We will hold you to the final part, but go for it.
The almost final.
A man's prerogative. To Mrs. France, questions about talking to staff. I just want to comment that I worked very closely with Mike for two and a half years on the Preble project. And he was very, very good about listening to people and figuring out what they meant, not necessarily what they said at times. So I have a lot of confidence in Mike and his ability to work with everyone.
I guess I'm interested, I think Mike expressed it, but just to put it on the list, the question with the Baird question. I guess I'd like some spelling out of cost savings if we tear down the building from scratch and.
Is building on that site an option? Building and then tearing down the old?
We could. We would have to work with the Parks Department.
Right.
Because, you know, everything from the playground to the west is park property.
It's park property, right.
Couldn't you go south where the parking lot is? We're talking about Baird, right?
Right.
Build in that area?
Yeah, we could look at, you know, doing something in the parking lot or even closer to the intersection. You know, by the Laverne and.
And then I guess the other question is.
Not much, the big fish.
Wasn't on the board when Lincoln was done. I assume it takes longer than the summer to build a new school. You know, what, I mean, and that has to be figured into the question of what do you do with those students for the school.
Lincoln went to Keller.
Lincoln went to Keller for a year.
Well, Lincoln's a lot smaller than they are maybe as students.
Like I said, we would try to build the addition and keep as many students in the building as possible. And we may have to, you know, transport some and use the, the ELC Prince of Peace site.
Not a lot of room in other schools on the site.
No, I remember in ninety-four when you did it. How you bust the kindergarten.
You have a floor saved here in Paul.
I mean, to me, if it's, you know, if we save a little money by repurposing what we have and building classrooms, then that makes more sense logistically. I just guess my, my other concern is, is what we will be repurposing quality building? Or are we just repurposing something that's not, you know, the quality that we want it to be? And I don't know just about building quality to be able to know that.
One of the other items that was, was in the update was the pre-selection of the construction management, architectural and engineering firms. And pre-selecting would be that we would not necessarily go through the RFP process and the interview process. That we would pick vendors that we have had success with in the past, which would therefore allow them to start doing, start doing their, the work that they need to do to put the dollars together and do the drawings because at this late a date, my concern is that we're going, whether we'll be able to do any of the projects this summer without having the pre-selection. Mike has talked more than that than I can.
Well, a lot of the school districts these days, they'll go with, and work with a construction manager, management firm, and then pre-select, you know, and they'll work with a design firm and bring it all in as a team with work in the district. And what you can do then is that you do some very preliminary designs for the projects and you come up with a cost estimate and it's pretty much, you know, guaranteed so that if you, let's just say Baird, for example, we say that it's twelve million dollars. And then the project would be designed to meet that twelve million dollars and we would stay within our limit. If we do it the traditional method, it would be more like we would do some preliminary designs now, come up with an estimate. We would turn it over to a design firm, which would take much longer. And we wouldn't, wouldn't be able to probably start bidding if we wouldn't start designing after April first with our final drawings. It would probably push it back, just from my past history, about three months to put a project like this together traditionally and bid it out. And then we wouldn't know what the final dollar amount was until the bids would come in, which could be middle of summer. So it's been very common for school districts to, you know, work with a construction management firm and try to get the design team done ahead of time. They've always been locked in that, you know, it's done with no cost. And if, you know, the project goes ahead, then they would be part of the team. If the project doesn't go ahead, then.
Does the construction design firm then determine the vendor?
No, that would, the construction portion, no, those pieces, it all gets bid out publicly.
Okay, okay, so that would still be.
And that's why we're saying you're going with a construction management firm instead of a contractor. Because a construction management firm bids out the carpeting, they bid out the masonry work, they bid out all the components. And so we still would get competitive bidding on construction. But that can, all of that can take place simultaneously with the design work.
So, Austin?
Yeah, this is, this is a good time for a vendor minority certified, a woman owned certified, a veteran certified, practice and policy in place, especially if there's a construction management firm. They should have access to all that information, especially the ones that are certified via the state. But thirty million dollars is a lot of money, so this is the time.
And, you know, just to use this for an example is, you know, that's the way, like Lambeau Field has been done. They hired up an instruction management firm. But I do know that when they bid out to vendors, that minority and women owned companies are part of the selection process that, and I'm not sure exactly what, you know, the requirements are. But I do remember reading about, especially when they did the first phase of Lambeau Field, that there was preference given to minority and women owned companies.
There's some percentage requirement.
There, I was going to say, there was a percentage requirement. And then, I mean, there's, there's a list. I mean, there are vendors in the state, certified businesses, I should say. And like I said, it's minority, women owned, veteran owned, disabled person owned.
And, you know, a construction management firm would help us work through those.
Just a word of caution or admonishment. When we moved ahead on some things prior to the referendum for the fifth high school, one of the things that came out of moving ahead was the design for the fifth high school, which looked like a Klingon starship, which was one of many things that helped sink that referendum. So whatever we do, I just want to keep that in the back of our minds, how we walk gingerly through all this.
Just a quick question, and there's been some discussion at the table, both for the timing of the, of the referendum, for spring or fall, and those are really the two discussion points that I've heard. You know, depending upon who you get out to vote and who your electorate is. The other piece, as we look at that then, as we move, you know, if we were to move forward with that question regarding the management person, is that then something that's necessary if it's pushed out to fall? Would you still recommend that if we weren't going to be, because you have someone help frame the conversation with clear, I mean, more clear vision, I guess, is, is that would be still your recommendation?
I would, it would still be our recommendation if we would go spring or fall.
Okay.
It would, if we go fall, we have more options, but it would still be our recommendation.
Yeah, I, I guess I would like staff to have some further discussion on that and then bring it back for our further discussion. I mean, I can see why we want to do April. We want to get going on it. Is that too tight a timetable? I mean, there's a lot of selling that needs to be done in this community before that time. And if we don't give this the go-ahead until our January meeting, we've got basically two months, which isn't a lot of time to explain, let's say, thirty million dollar project or projects to the community. That's my concern. So maybe if staff could have that conversation and then bring it back, then we can have that conversation.
Because the last referendum, our first discussion was in December. Now granted, there was the additional days that you could wait before you passed the resolution.
I think this referendum is a lot more complicated than that sixteen point, you know, it was, it was a bunch of technology and then some will be advertised as basic needs. These are. These are building almost a whole new school if we go with the Baird thing, it's making a sizable addition to at least one other school. It's, I think there's more here than the last referendum.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
No, that's true, because basically the last referendum were things that were with the prior referendum.
Right.
That people would have voted for had it been something...
Had it been split dollars.
Had it been a separate question. So it's really revisiting and responding to the general public, saying, let us, you know, Elmore kind of sank with the fifth high school. So, yeah. I agree with you, Mike.
If I may add to talking to staff, perhaps we'd have conversations with some of the power brokers or influential groups in the community, be it the Chamber or Taxpayers Group or others, I just want to address them right up front.
What was our timetable? When did we start going out to the community, the last referendum? I don't remember. Do you remember?
I can get you that in.
I think we did, like, mid-January, we geared up the Board Speaker Bureau and we had a long list of places to go.
But again, that was all stuff they had heard before.
Yeah.
Right, but it was, but it was the mechanism with which we went out.
Right.
So it's, it's how we prepare ourselves to give the presentation. But if we did it in the course of, you know, two months, then technically we can do, use that same timetable, it's just a matter of making sure that when we go out, we have the necessary information that we...
When was the last referendum again?
Two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten, April.
Thank you.
And again, I'm not an expert on elections, but I know that the November election will be an interesting election.
Yes, I said, well.
Yes.
I don't know where that...
It's, it's a big, it's a big...
Well, I mean, it's a midterm, I mean, it's a governor and a midterm, and so...
Governor and legislators.
That's, that's, that's not the highest turnout, that's not the widest variety electorate, but it certainly is higher than April.
I mean, it's also distracting, I mean, it, you know, you're trying to make noise within a lot more conversation that's going on about things other than the referendum.
Although I think...
In April, it's a time where we can, you know, people will be a little more, you know, potentially a little more apt to pay attention and listen, because they don't have all these other things that they have to decide.
True, but it's a very narrow electorate anyway.
And our three main, you know, Green Bay, Alloy, and Bellevue. Green Bay, all of the alderman races are up, and Bellevue and Alloy both have trustee seats up. So there is something else in our three main municipalities that there is, so there would be an additional interest in it, and school board races.
I think that as, as we've looked at, and I've done some chunking out, I think it really depends on which questions are brought forward in terms of how complex it is, in terms of where this goes for a conversation. Obviously, the seventy-two million would not be a recommendation from management. I think I agree with Alan, and we've discussed, and Mike from Baird as well, that whole piece around wanting to just maintain a level that made sense so that there is no increase to taxes, and being able to move forward, but, you know, also taking a peek at that fund balance. But there's a variety of questions in here, as I, you know, I look, I see renovation addition, I see basically a new building, I see two buildings that have been desperately in need of support, that those singled out is about fourteen million. That, and that, I think people would really understand, particularly when we have such a large contingency. I would say about every third person I meet in this community graduated from east to west, in all reality, and very famous people. So, so you start to look at that, and people, I think, can see, see the value there, but in that Washington area, it came through those schools. So then, you know, so I really think if we go back and redefine the areas, the level of detail, and the devil in the detail will be like a Baird school, and what, where the board wishes to go with that, if they wish to go with that, and then also with those additions, what could perhaps be something that maybe would be part of the fund balance moving forward, that could be addressed, you know, for a changing program need or something. So, I think we can come back with that. Next.
One more question for me. Alan, if I heard you write thirty million now and perhaps another thirty million or so in three years to keep the tax rate even?
It could be three years, it could be four years.
Okay. The first thirty million, though, would all those projects be able to be completed within that time period before the next referendum?
No.
Okay.
Normally, it's been roughly forty years. We did have a year where we had one in spring and in fall, back in the nineties. And that was back when we were building a lot of buildings that went out, one in the year. And we, and we have had some in November, so it's not that they've always been in the spring rolls.
Well, some people would argue, you put your plan together whenever you've got it completed, let the chips fall over if they may, whatever is the next election. But it's one way to look at it.
Well, I mean, this, I don't know, I think I total it up once going back, this community has always been very supportive of referendums. I think there's been, I mean, outside of the fifth high school, which there's a whole series of issues that sunk that, but I think we've had, I don't know, maybe fifteen referendums over the years, and the community's always supported us, because, I mean, even going back to my years at DePresseco's, I always felt that this school did a good job of explaining its needs to the community, and I think if we do that again, I think we'll be okay.
And the only other advantage, again, to have it in the spring would be that if it is later, it will be another year of the debt service levy decreasing. And when you get to the point, I mean, if we did nothing for four years, we would be at zero debt, and the concern I have is that it would get too low, and we have a referendum, it's going to be very difficult to flatten that out.
Right.
And that's why, you know, it is important to move forward on a referendum regardless of when it is, because the one thing you don't want to have do is have all your referendum debt disappear, and then you have a referendum and it's all going to be an increase. No one's going to remember the years where you were lowering it, they'll just remember what increases.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you bring something back in our work session?
In December.
Yes.
December work session.
Yep, we'll have all of this.
Okay, thank you.
Got it all figured out.
There you go.
Michael, I've been to every building, look at him smile.
That's right. You have the answer to that question.
Sure. All right, we have no action items, so let's...
I think that is the end of my report.
Okay, then we'll have a short break. Why don't we come back at seven thirty-five if we can on that clock. Next, we have our legal update, and Melissa's going to share that with us.
The timely topic of school board elections, we put a little question and answer together, and I'm hoping it was a little bit above, most of you have conducted more than one election, so I didn't want to give you the nuts and bolts one-on-one of school board elections, this is a little bit more detailed, and some questions that are related to elections that I thought would be helpful for you. I don't want to reread the document, you have it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, if you'd like to discuss anything in a little bit more detail. Go on, Chris.
I believe as I read through it, and maybe I didn't read it correctly, you said people could sign a, I forgot, what do you call it?
Nomination paper.
Nomination paper. And just to be clear, I believe you can sign as many as there are open seats.
That is correct, but you can't pledge to sign every single individual who's running for office, just as many as our seats are open.
Unless it's unopposed.
Right.
I mean, it could be that the people running filled with seats that are open and they can pledge to do that.
Correct.
Okay, rock and roll.
Melissa's done such a great job, you don't have any questions.
Because it's the brilliance showing through.
Just for the record, and it's, for the viewers, this is all conducted through the city clerk's office, the papers, and so if they want further information, one would have to go there.
Yes, unlike other school districts who the clerk for the board takes out or has the nomination papers, and candidates can take out the nomination papers through that, through the clerk or the secretary for the school board, Green Bay School District conducts their nomination process and their forms through the city clerk's office. So you can contact the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is the interesting school council report.
Yay! Okay. So, Southwest, Southwest recently had their casting for Hairspray, and as we were discussing about before the meeting, all our musicals seem to be wonderful this year, and this girl sitting right here was also cast in Hairspray. Southwest recently held a veterans' assembly, it was held in their auditorium, and students were welcome to come and listen to veterans' stories, obviously this was held on Veterans' Day, and as young as preschool were actually invited, so that was an exciting event and learning experience to have at Southwest.
Didn't you Skype?
Yeah, we Skyped one of our graduating students who was actually stationed in Germany, maybe?
I don't know.
But it was amazing to see, like, it was just, the assembly was really like a cool thing, and I think every student in the room respected every individual who spoke there and got a meaningful message about them. It was amazing.
Sure. Next is, also at Southwest, was the entrepreneurship awards, and Tricia goes to Southwest, so why don't I let you talk about this, because you will know more about it.
Okay, well, I'm a member, DECA, and this year we are conducting our Shark Tank. We are, we invited some people to sponsor, five contestants, and to promote their business plan. The winner gets five hundred dollars, and local businesses gift the winner, and are the judges.
So someone gets to start a business with the help of local businesses.
So these are students that are...
On to West, as many of you may know, they recently won the lip dub contest, so ten thousand dollars to West High School, that was a pretty big deal, we thanked the radio station for that. A lot of our local schools participated in making those videos, but West ended up winning, so we were all very happy for them. The IB students at West High School recently got their Chromebooks, so being that we have a lot of IB students in ICSC, a lot of them were very excited about having those, really helping in their education. East High School, girls cross-country, went to state for the first time in history, so that was pretty exciting. And also, a foreign exchange tennis player made it to state, so that was a kind of interesting showing of school spirit.
Nice article in the paper on her, that was very nice.
Down at Preble, our cross-country, our football, our soccer, and our swim team all performed in playoff levels on the one Saturday, and I know you, Dr. Langenfeld, and Mrs. Paulo were at our pep assembly, and so we were seeing you walk down the halls, and that was exciting.
How are we supposed to work with her?
She was, she was at the soccer game, I was at the football game.
Were you?
Yeah, it was raining, I have photos to prove I was there.
That was, that was a big week at Preble, and just being a student and, you know, seeing these guys, being here representing Preble, it was, it was amazing, and many of these guys have been seen in school since I was in the third grade, and to have them perform at the state soccer level, it was just a really amazing experience, and for everyone at Preble. And then also, this past Thursday was Business and Ethics Day, I know, again, more of you were in attendance there. The day started with the political figures, our local figures, the mayor and the county executive, Mr. Streckenbach, and some other people were also there, and we were given scenarios that we got to go over with them, and that was kind of a learning experience for all of us. Some of the scenarios included things like the mine in northern Wisconsin, was that ethical, things related to that, the merger with US Airways, American Airlines, the ethics involved in that. So minus the political agenda that morning, it was fun, and it was a learning experience again, to get involved and really have that one-on-one communication with our local officials. And then the luncheon later on, all of our ICSC members were assigned to a table, and we got to network with a few of the local organizations. A few of our members got to sit with the Packers, and that was, everybody loved that, and they were, they had much to say about that. I was a little jealous, but, I got to sit with Palm's Tigers, and a lot of them were really interesting, and just such nice people, really good representatives of the local community. So that was Business and Ethics Day, and it's been exciting.
Do you want to mention the East student who got the big scholarship?
Yes.
Kieran.
Sophia.
Sophia, yes.
Yes.
Talking about her academic achievements, I know the girl and I, the girl sitting next to me, we were just in awe of thirty-five on an ACT, and, yeah, she had a lot of things going for her, yeah, she was an amazing student.
I, I thought it was really interesting to hear, name all the very successful East High School graduates in our community, who are very successful business folks right now, and Curly Lambeau spoke to, but to really recognize, you know, sometimes East doesn't always get the credit that it deserves, and the reality is, you recognize that you have a student, and many students there, who are scoring very high on ACTs, and, you know, thirty-five out of thirty-six is something that most people don't get. And to also, yeah, Mr. Chernick from Camera Corner, a famous East High grad, also spoke to the various coursework and the rigorous coursework that she is engaged in, which is extraordinary. So it was a, it was a nice shining moment, I thought, for East High School and for Sophia as well, and her family, so it was nice.
That concludes my question.
A question if I may, swimming at Preble, isn't that with another school, or has that changed?
East and Preble are combined, they are...
So it's East-West, Preble-East swim team?
Yeah, Marlin. However, I believe that this upcoming year, it's going to be Green Bay, United, it's all going to be one, all the four schools are...
Which doesn't speak well for the swimming program.
Kimma's speaking, please.
That is a better way to approach it.
That's speculation, I'm sorry.
There you go. It is something we're discussing.
It's out there.
And the boys is still united, the boys is all four schools swimming.
Well, I mean, that's saying we don't have much participation, it's gone down, that's not particularly good.
Well, the boys just started about four, five...
Swimming?
We started boys swimming about five years ago.
Oh, we were talking about, oh, boys, I'm sorry, I was thinking...
She was talking about girls.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm talking about girls, if that's united.
Yeah, I was saying, the boys right now have the four high school teams, and they were starting that five years ago.
One more thought, too, I'll add to yours, the theater's been great, really great this year, and, you know, we saw, just finished seeing Legally Blonde, which was a new production.
Did you enjoy it?
It was interesting, yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was really, such talent.
And for the public knowledge, it will be on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at seven o'clock, so...
And saw East High School's Joseph production, which is delightful and, and very fun, too, so, very forward to Hairspray.
So what's your role in Hairspray?
Oh, I'm just in the chorus.
No, of course.
I'm happy to be a part of it.
Shouldn't say just in the chorus, you should say I'm in the chorus.
That's right.
It's important.
Well, you start to recognize hundreds of students engaged in these productions, and I love that they bring every student out on stage, not just the main lead actors, but the behind-the-scenes, it wouldn't make it, I mean, in the orchestras, I mean, all have been just extraordinary, so it's great.
Our school district has a history of doing that in our high schools, recognizing everyone, which is nice.
I'm liking that.
All right. Next, we'll move to our system report, the first is Teaching Early, facilitated by Katie Meloni.
Actually, no, aren't we doing the legislative...
Legislative liaison, sorry, right. Legislative liaison report will be facilitated by Mike Bledka.
Thank you, Brenda. A lot of stuff to go through here, but I think some really interesting things, too. The DPI released its final count on the statewide vouchers outside of Milwaukee and Racine, there were five hundred and twelve students receiving a voucher. Of those receiving vouchers, this year, four hundred and six of them, or seventy-nine percent, did not... year, 406 of them, or 79%, did not attend a Wisconsin public school last year. 21%, 106 students were from public schools. And 73%, 307, no, that's wrong, attending, the rest of them attended, no, that's right, 371 attended a private school last year. So nearly 80% of those getting a voucher were already enrolled in private schools. Local vouchers, Grace East, 19 students. Grace South, 14. Grace West, 10. And Notre Dame Academy, 10. Statewide voucher program this year will cost an estimated $3.22 million. And that program is fully funded from state general purpose revenues. Now, if people would think, well, that's not very many. Next year, the voucher limit goes up to 1,000. And then after that, there's been obviously a lot of talk in Madison of, of taking the caps off. And I think, and the figure just came out for Racine this year. So I think that kind of tells where the state's going. And I'll just quote from the story in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. "In its first year operating free of a state-imposed enrollment cap, Racine's private school voucher program saw enrollment more than double to 1,245 students. Growth in the Milwaukee private school voucher program continued its steady climb, increasing by about 3.6% from last year to 25,820 students, up from 24,941 last September." So there are total, for those two districts, total of more than 27,000 students using public dollars to attend 140 private, mostly religious schools in the state in the current school year.
Are there any statistics on Racine's percentage of students that have attended or not attended that?
I, there was nothing in, I didn't see any.
Because those numbers, maybe not this year, but in the past, we've heard those numbers.
Right, in the past.
Just a quick follow-up, Mike. Can you tell us, you talked about the expansion of the vouchers being 1,000 next year. Is it limited to just those 25 schools? Or can other schools also then have an opportunity to get some of those 1,000?
It's my understanding there's a reapplication process.
For the various systems or schools?
Right, right.
Okay.
You mentioned 79% had already enrolled in, in the private schools. Has that number gone up? I thought when we first heard that figure, it was around 68.
It was, it's, these are the final figures. And it's a little bit higher. I think we were talking about two-thirds. I think the preliminary figures was about two-thirds. And now it's almost 80.
And it, and it has to do with the homeschooled students as well. There was a lot of state student. So it isn't just all those who are in private school, but anyone who's never attended a public school, from what I understand.
Well, to me, the figures show what a sham vouchers are in trying to help youngsters who aren't succeeding in public schools. It's basically about the people that have means, giving money to voucher folks, which is something we can't do to our legislators, give them money, and passing bills because they were scratching each other's back. There's nothing about doing right by kids.
Sure. I mean, there's even, there's a quote in here from the principal of St. John's Lutheran School in Racine. She says, "I think it's wonderful. It's primarily serving our students who have already been here." So, I mean, you're setting up, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later in some other comments. But we're setting up a whole nother system of education that's state-funded. And, okay, I'll, I'll get in later as to where that's going, but...
May I ask, were there going to be comments about the presentation and research from the other evening?
Yep. And that's number two. Comments from two vouchers. That's the second one. But I'm, and I know some of the, some of you were also at that, so I'll make a couple of brief comments. I wanted to center my comments on a speaker at the Legislative Advocacy Conference, Michael Ford, is a professor at UW Oshkosh. Teaches public sector budgeting. He's got a PhD in urban studies from UW Milwaukee. He's doing, also doing a 10-state study on the link between board governance and student achievement. Used to live in Milwaukee and has extensively studied vouchers, starting in Milwaukee. And when Dan Rossmerly introduced him, this raised a lot of eyebrows. He worked for eight years in the private, he worked for School Choice Wisconsin for seven years, and also worked for the Wisconsin Policy Research Institute. But people are saying, why is this guy here? Well, I'll tell you why he was there. His research took him in the right direction. So I'm going to quote from some of his research. About half, he started out talking about Milwaukee, just the whole background. Then he got to, one of his slides was, "A 40% school failure rate in voucher schools. 128 schools have left the Milwaukee School Choice Program. Those schools have received over $388 million in public funds. About 200 million of that have gone to schools that simply closed." His conclusion after 23 years of vouchers, "The Milwaukee voucher experience raises serious doubts about the ability of school vouchers to raise academic achievement levels in an urban area over time. In fact, the evolution of voucher policy in Milwaukee gives reasons to question whether voucher programs can remain stable enough to even offer a true evaluation of the efficacy of a market-based education policy. The political pressures surrounding voucher programs actually may make public education a good that resists privatization." And he get into, what does the future, what does the future hold for vouchers? Immediate, given the low switcher rate, the fiscal impact will likely be the opportunity cost and increasing payments to families already in private school, and the ballooning state costs of the uncapped Milwaukee-Racine programs. In 10 years, this could easily be a half a billion dollar budget line. So what does the future hold for vouchers? Long-term, no school choice cap in Wisconsin is ever held. With the easing of income restrictions and enrollment caps, the half-billion-dollar cost estimate will look small. Unknowns. Will it continue to be 100% state-funded? Will new schools open and attract switchers? Will new schools open and fail à la Milwaukee? The existential threat. Vouchers represent a move away from democratic governance and accountability. Independent charter board members are less engaged and oriented toward the public than elected school boards. Independent charter school, charter board members are also more insular and homogeneous. The greatest threat is the movement away from a model that has proven effective. Lessons for school boards. Limit switchers. Know your competition. Know your students' options. Educate as to why you are the best choice. Be transparent with taxpayers. Document the percentage of your levy that goes to fund independent charter schools. Show the revenue limit impact of student switching. Plan ahead. Do a trend analysis for realistic budget forecasts. Work to improve governance behaviors. Stress the governance performance connection in the public. His overall conclusions. The Milwaukee experience demonstrates the statewide voucher expansion and any future independent charter expansion is of little educational merit. The early experience of the statewide voucher program demonstrates it is primarily a new subsidy to low-income private school students. Recent budget actions demonstrate a significant policy shift away from local control and towards state support of non-district students. Nevertheless, your strengths, talking about public school board districts, are many. Market share, proven track record, democratic accountability. So, that presentation was very well received. And the fact that he worked for seven years for School Choice Wisconsin and ended up with these conclusions on vouchers, I think is pretty telling.
Can you get us copies of that?
Yeah, I have the, I gave Michelle a copy of the PowerPoint. She can...
Okay, can you beam that over to us?
Yeah.
A, a point that resonates with me continually in all of this is, do you believe in having a democracy or not? And if you do, you have to follow logic of it, what's needed to support a, a democracy. And if you don't care about having democracy, then, you know, you're looking to get rid of private schools, in my opinion. It's, it's the public schools that, excuse me, public schools, it's the public schools that have made democracy what it is. And, you know, I think we all believe in it. That's why we're here. Hopefully, the public will see it's more than just about choice. It's about maintaining a democracy.
I mean, this is a person that the public should hear. I mean, he's right down at UW Oshkosh. I think if we ever have any forums here, we should think about inviting him.
Okay, good to know.
And then there was a, a program at UW Green Bay last week, Life with Vouchers, a community conversation. And Michelle and Celeste and Chris were also there, and Melissa. I'll just mention one thing from the main speaker, if anyone else has any comments. Keynote speaker is Dr. Devon Carlson from the University of Oklahoma, who has studied the voucher program. His, his, his program was, "Life After Vouchers: What Happens to Students Who Leave Private Schools to the Traditional Public Sector?" And his research is on Milwaukee. And I'll just read this. "His most startling finding is that children who leave or are asked to leave the voucher schools in Milwaukee are the poorest and the lowest performing, despite what is said by so-called school voucher, school choice advocates. The good news is that once they leave the private schools, these same poor, low-performing children make large academic gains once they are back in Milwaukee public schools." If anyone else was there, had any comment on any of those?
Well, I, I, if my memory serves me right, the gains were statistically significant over a couple-year period.
And they dropped off. But they still made gains.
And they leveled off.
Yeah. Leveled off is better. That was, that was actually, that was actually a very interesting finding that he had had.
Yeah, I, I, that was extremely eye-opening, at least to, to me.
Number three, Status of State Education Legislation, Guns in Schools. We had sent a letter signed by Michelle and Tom Molitor, the Green Bay Police Chief, objecting to that amendment, which would allow anyone with a concealed carry permit to bring a gun into a school. And I think the legislature heard from many other people around the state. And that's been taken off the table. And I think that that's probably the end of it. Even Robin Boss said, "We're not going to discuss this anymore."
To even have it brought up down there is an absurdity. Just an absurdity. What are we, the Wild West, for crying out?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it just, it. Math, science requirements. The Assembly and Senate have passed a bill that the governor said he would find that increases math and science graduation requirements from two credits to three credits. Yeah, but there's some flexibility options for schools to meet a new requirement. The law will apply students who graduate in the 2016-17 school year. Tony Evers put out a press release praising the action. He said, "The legislation provides flexibilities to school boards to award math credits for approved computer science courses and a math or science credit for students' career and technical education work. CTE offers our students a rich blend of academic knowledge and the employability skills and workforce behaviors necessary for post-secondary education and careers. Out of all students taking advanced math and science courses at the K-12 level, only 2% are studying computer science, despite the fact that over half of all STEM jobs are in computing. This legislation honors the importance of CTE courses to meet the new requirements and will encourage more CTE and computer science offerings in our schools, which will advance student opportunities and ensure that they graduate college and career-ready."
So that was both science and math, or three things?
Both, yeah.
They two? Math and two?
They were both two. Ours is, we have, we have three math and two science. So we will have to increase a science and/or computer science or...
They're, they're all nodding, so they're all on.
You're all on that. Okay.
All right. They are so good.
Well, the issue with science may be having enough labs. So we might start to think about that or facilitate people.
I remember we talked about that a couple of years ago. And I think particularly at Preble, there was some concern whether there's enough lab space at Preble.
Right.
And...
But with computer science, it's a science, it doesn't require, you know, that kind of lab space. Computer lab space, which I probably don't have enough.
And, and...
A lot of things are mobile.
The, the third bill, which could have a financial impact on us indirectly, is that the Senate Transportation, Public Safety, and Veteran and Military Affairs Committee is considering a proposal which would require safety belts on all newly manufactured school buses. So if that happened, obviously, probably the cost that our bus companies would probably pass that along to us. So that's only on, they wouldn't have to be retro, existing buses would not have to be retrofitted. It's newly manufactured buses.
Because the buses in Wisconsin.
In Wisconsin.
In Wisconsin.
Which makes buying them hard.
Well, I mean, that are used in schools. Yeah. That, buses that transport, school buses that transport students in Wisconsin.
Yeah, that's...
And I, I think there's concern some, some smaller districts that own their own buses. If they have to buy, I think that's...
Well, yeah, if indeed research says that that's a good thing to do for safety, I don't have a problem with it. If it's just doing it for the sake of doing it because it sounds good, then, then I have a problem with it.
Number four, Legislative Advocacy Conference. I just briefly want to mention that, it was in Stevens Point a couple of weeks ago. Melissa and I gave a presentation along with a couple of folks from Beloit. And we were asked to do that by WSB because they said Green Bay and Beloit were the two most active school districts in vouchers. And talked about our experience and then going forward from there. But we talked about community advocacy. And throughout the rest of, our presentation was in the morning. We were a little over an hour. And then they took like 45 minutes with questions. A lot of people had a lot of questions on how, and we tried to give them tips, other districts, on how they can do what we did to advance our advocacy in the community. And I showed our video at the end. People loved the video. The student, the student teacher video, the four-minute one, yeah.
Student parent, you mean?
Yeah.
The student parent, the student parent video that we saw here.
You guys saw it, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And we showed it at a public hearing and then at Michelle's parent. So that went over very well. The previous evening was the final meeting of Policy Resolutions Committee. And I won't go through all the resolutions, although there were three of them that I want to mention, dealing with accountability of voucher schools. Actually, there are three separate. One says, "Private and prokial schools that accept state funding through taxpayer finance vouchers must be held to the same state stature requirements, testing requirements, and accountability standards as public schools." Second one says, "Teachers and administrators in private voucher schools should be required to meet the same standards required of public school teachers and administrators, including licensed juror standards and educator effectiveness provisions." And the third one is one that I had suggested to the committee, and they agreed. "Private voucher schools must be subject to the open meetings and open records laws that apply to public schools." We will be getting the final version of those in the next couple of weeks. Michelle and I have talked about this. I think we'll do what we did the last couple of years. Once we get those, she will parcel them out to staff. And then at our meeting in January before the convention, we'll have staff join us at the table. And we'll go through the resolutions. And they can tell us of the impact of the resolutions on our district. And I think that will help guide us. And actually, we do need a delegate. I don't think we ever appointed a delegate.
No, we didn't.
I don't know if we need to do that tonight, but... I don't know if we need to do that tonight, but I think we will need to do that by January.
Right.
Do we have to formally, or just, you just have to send?
Well, I, actually, I think WSB will be asking us probably within the next month who your delegate is, so maybe we should do that in December.
Is there anything about it? If you're interested in, or if we're going, the delegate assembly is usually on Thursday?
It's the Wednesday at one-thirty.
Okay, Wednesday afternoon of the conference.
And...
Can you put that on our, can we put it on, can we put it on your legislative agenda so we don't forget?
Actually, I, I'm not going to be here in December, I'm going to be in England, but I was probably planning on not having a report because the legislature's done. But we're having it early Christmas with my son and his family, so...
I can put it on Michelle's report.
Yeah.
We all listen Kate and George, the new baby. Well, you have a new baby too, so...
And finally, I want to mention Luther Olson, who is Chair of the Senate Education Committee. Steve Castell is Chair of the Assembly Education Committee. They spent about an hour with us at the Legislative Advocacy Conference, and obviously, their comments are important because any education legislation goes through their committee. So I wanted, a couple of things that they said, they were asked, and Joe Quick had asked them questions, and he said, "By the year 2020, what will vouchers look like?" Luther Olson said, "With comments by the voucher people, like vouchers in every backpack", he said, "Once the door is open, I don't see how we can stop it." And he said, "The budget implications are huge. If by 2020, if 100,000 private school students get $10,000 each, that's a billion dollars." And he said a number of times, the amount of money, campaign money being poured into legislative governors' races, he said, is just astronomical. He mentioned that like three times. And he said, "These are kids we were never responsible before." And I, this next comment, I was surprised he made this publicly, but he said, "Those advocating for vouchers were really not that interested in vouchers, and they preferred tax deductions or tax credits." He said, "They were not interested in poor kids coming to their schools, they wanted to keep their elite schools."
Natural, yes.
And, but he said, "We can't afford to fund two separate school systems." And both he and Steve Castell said that they opposed further expansion of the voucher program. Their accountability bill, Luther Olson predicted it would pass in the spring session. Steve Castell was less certain of how the Assembly would vote. Common Core, and I should mention that both refused to serve on those Common Core study committees. And Joe Quick said, "Well, what, what should you advise school board members to do?" Luther Olson said, "Stay the course." He said, "This is good stuff. It puts Wisconsin and the country in a place." He said, "He watched the hearings on Wisconsin I and shook his head at some of the testimony given by the so-called experts and their quote loose association with the truth." Steve Castell said, "I don't see any way we won't do that." And he noted that the 50th anniversary of the Kennedy assassination was coming up, and reading all of the conspiracy theories being regurgitated. And he said, "Now, in the computer age, the conspiracy theories surrounding Common Core are 10 times worse." They were asked about some of the possibilities coming out of these Common Core committees that would propose to weaken the Common Core. Luther Olson noted that those proposals would have to go through the education committees, and he said, quote, "We're not going to pass something that's a joke." So, pretty interesting stuff from those two gentlemen. So unless anyone has any questions, that...
Could I just have a comment? We received a letter from the Republicans who sit on the Common Core Committee requesting that we respond and go back to the standards prior to the Common Core and respond to a number of questions. So our teaching and learning team took it in the spirit that we are hopeful that someone will read it, and unlike the public hearing, I mean, I think it's very concerning. And while it came with just the Republicans, we will be sending it to our local legislators, probably Senator Olson and Representative Castell, as well as the Republicans. A lot of work has gone in by staff, and I will note that in my letter to them, so that they recognize that we are serious, and we would never want to be stated that we weren't at the table to, to voice our perspective and opinion about best practice and, and our current work. So we do have a response for them that we'll be submitting this week, here in a day or two, so...
With that response, and I'd say I really thought, the last letter I saw, we always send out good letters, Superintendent, I think, but the last one I really thought was very good, to the point about so many things, about the one hearing, the way it was expressed. But with this letter pointing to this group, should our, I don't need the answer right now, but should our local legislators also receive a copy of it to know where we are?
Yeah, that's right, yeah. We'll send it to everyone, just as the other letter that we sent with all the copies, the testimony went local even though they aren't on the committee, so...
Thank you.
Testimony of Teaching and Learning Team, and Brenda as well.
Okay, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mike. And now, the class is gone.
All right.
Assistant reports, teaching and learning will be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. We have several action items that, these are all motions that we discussed thoroughly last time we met, in our work sessions, first one. I move that the Bay Lake manufacturing proposal as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions? As Katie said, we have a discussion, just for here, describing the proposal. Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Blaca?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the enrollment policies and rules as listed waiver first reading be approved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Sandy?
Blaca?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the choice area between Elmore and Jefferson Elementary Schools be terminated effective at the conclusion of the 2013-14 school year, and that the current students utilizing this choice area option be permitted to continue their enrollment until such time as noted in the additional recommendations, as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Blaca?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the East High School Institute for the Fine Arts Campstone Course as presented be approved.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Blaca?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the marketing education grades nine to 12 curriculum and resources as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions? Sandy?
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Blaca?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the project Lead the Way Course Edition at Lombardi Middle School as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Blaca?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
We had one announcement, Brenda reminded us, that the WSB convention enrollment has opened, and that we are to let Sandy know what our intentions are. And that concludes our report.
All right, thank you, Paige. Next, we'll have the organizational support, and that will be facilitated by Chris Wagner.
Thank you. Under action items, first recommend that the employment of Vicki Bayer as Middle School Associate Principal Lombardi Middle School eleven months be approved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Vicki is here, we'll introduce her after we vote. She gets big points for...
I know.
Stay, Connor.
Nice touch.
Sandy?
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Blaca?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried six zero. Vicki is in the audience. Welcome. Jim, you want to tell us a little bit about...
Well, as you know, Vicki's going to be the new Associate Principal at Lombardi Middle School, and she comes from the Nina School District, where she is an Associate Principal at Nina High School, and, is it Shantuck Middle School?
Shantuck.
And she has a great deal of experience as a health educator, and teacher, and a student assistant program coordinator, and with McKinney and Vento. And she is, does a lot of guest speaking on a variety of health and wellness topics, and is recognized for that. She was the Nina Joint School District Teacher of the Year in 2006 as well. There's a lot more about Vicki, and you have her resume.
Yeah.
I, I think what's interesting is that I wasn't even part of the interview process, and Vicki may or may not know this, but I started getting emails from people telling me about you in a very positive way that I forwarded on to Mark Smith unsolicited. I don't even think you know they were sending them to you, so that's always a good thing too, so, welcome.
Welcome.
Jim, we appreciate you sticking around too.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
All right. Oh, no, you're in charge.
You can take the glasses off now.
Yeah.
That's right. Readys.
Next recommendation is that the transfer of Joseph Rucker, Associate Principal Franklin Middle School and West High School, twelve months, the transfer to be Associate Principal interim at East High School, eleven months, with no change in salary for this school year.
Second.
Any questions?
Sandy?
Blaca?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
And the next recommendation is that all employees whose wages are governed by the teacher's salary schedule that achieve the following steps on the teacher's salary schedule as of June 30th, 2013, Bachelor Step Five, Bachelors plus 15, Step Six, Half-Masters, Step Nine, Masters Step 14, Masters plus 15, Step 15, be advanced one step with compensation retroactive to July 1, 2013, as presented be approved.
Second.
As, as the board, as, as you know, there's 253.3 FTE educators who are at the various steps that this motion covers, and so what this motion will do is allow these people who've been frozen at these steps to move one step up on the salary schedule. The, the step is $1,300 in each of these areas. And so your vote, if you would approve this, will make that happen, and it would be retroactive. So it will be treating these educators as the other educators walk on the salary schedule. The cost is $329,020 based on the $1,300 times the FTE I just stated.
Any questions or comments? Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Blaca?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
And next, we recommend that the consent items as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions?
A couple of questions. And perhaps you can't answer this right now, now that it has to be answered now. I noted the Department Chair at Franklin, same department chair has music and art, which I found a little peculiar or different from my past experience. You know anything about that?
What, what item is that, do you call the, the name of the, they're in alpha order, so I'll, I don't know of the name.
I, I mean, I'm not used to seeing somebody going in both those directions.
Franklin and art.
Uh, to, to handle it, so, and over the, and this, actually, I have three questions. Second one being, if I read it right, Preble has three special ed department chairs? And, I mean, I, I could see two, three, I, I don't know, I guess my, my, my history of experiences tell me every team of horses needs a lead horse, and three of them are, I don't know how that's broken out and to what benefit, so that, that I had a question about.
They split the rider, three ways. Kim just said that they split the rider three ways.
I understand that, but it just seems like an odd way to split up duties. Again, you know, my analogy is every team of horses needs a lead horse, and a team with three lead horses, I don't, I don't know. Just something to look at. The last one, just for, refresh my memory, non, what are non-certified exempt staff?
That is a individual who is not a teacher, but they are exempt from overtime, so they would be a professional-level person.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Great, um, do we have the consent items? Sandy?
Blaca?
Aye.
Franz?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Thank you.
Are there any announcements? Yes?
I don't know whether it's announcement or this, a couple of things. One is, every day when I drive into town, I, I drive by two elementary schools, Bear to Nicolay, and I see out there in all sorts of weather, crossing guards, being out there for a couple hours, helping our kids. And my, my hat's off to them, I don't know what I can do other than publicly acknowledging them, you know, my thanks for being out there guarding, guarding their kids. I, I know I sure would find it difficult to stand out there in sun, rain, snow, sleet.
Yeah, do we, I have to share with you, I go by, you know, this wonderful woman on Ashland and Mason, and I watch how she interacts with the students, and it's pretty extraordinary. And some always want to hug her, and she's got to get them across the stoplights and gets them through, and sometimes there are parents with her, and they all are, and then there's always the same little ones that want to hug her before they take off, and she shepherds them all, and I watch her every day, and I, and I think somehow we need to, I was thinking I'd buy her a cup of coffee, I don't even know, she likes coffee, but I like her, so...
You know, I think I've, I've seen a lot of crossing guards become buddies with the kids, I think they were apt to listen to them if they, they treated them like...
Well, they talk and talk.
On the Walker Kids' School Day in September, How School did it, and they walked the route to the crossing guards and thanked the crossing guards.
They shook hands.
And they walked back to school. That was good. They're good.
Glad we all feel good after that one.
We did.
The second one has to do, and I don't know whether it belongs here, if it doesn't, so be it, we received tickets to an event this last week. And I personally don't like that because then that ticket goes unused, because it was assigned seating. And, you know, I'd rather, I believe, if that came through the district, I guess I'd like that to be looked at, I'd rather have it said to me, "Would you like to go? We have tickets available," or something as opposed, "Here's your ticket." Then I feel guilty because I had another event I, that took priority, then that event, nobody wanted my ticket. So I just share that with you.
You know, we have a very generous community that sometimes just reaches out and sends tickets. They include us in grants sometimes and don't mention it to us, so we just, just have to figure it out.
Great, anything else? Do you have a poll, Glenn?
Almost.
Almost. You know, actually, I think this is not an announcement, but there, so I will have to deal with it later, but I did promise someone I'd bring it up tonight. There was a letter that went out about, um, students with special needs, no, students with special needs, so I, this person had contacted me, I actually received a letter, I have some questions about it, but I'll ask afterward. There was a letter that went out about, um, students with special needs, no, students with special needs, so I, this person had contacted me.